The Clerk will now proceed to read the Orders of the Day.
Finance Bill, Committee. Now.
Order. Under the Order of the House of 27th of November, we shall now move to Committee of the Whole House.
Order.
Finance Bill, Clause seven and Schedule one, clauses eight to eleven and Schedule two, Clause twelve, clauses fifteen to eighteen, Schedule three, clauses forty-seven to fifty-three, and any new clauses or new schedules relating to the subject matter of those clauses and those schedules.
I remind members that in committee, members should address the Chair as Deputy Speaker, should not address the Chair as Deputy Speaker. Please use our names when addressing the Chair. Madam Chair, Chair, or Madam Chairman are also perfectly acceptable. We will begin with Clause forty-seven stand part, with which it will be convenient to consider the clauses stand part and new clauses on the selection paper. The question is that Clause forty-seven stand part of the bill. I call Minister James Murray.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this government believes that all children should have the opportunity to succeed. Their opportunity should not be limited by who they are, where they're from, or how much their parents earn. We are determined that a young person's background should not limit what they can achieve, and that is why, despite the dire fiscal situation we inherited and the numerous tough choices that this has entailed, the Chancellor prioritised investment in education at the budget in October. At that budget, the Chancellor announced a real terms growth rate of 3.4% in education funding, including an extra £2.3 billion increase to the core schools budget in England for the next financial year. This funding supports the recruitment of six and a half thousand additional teachers in line with the government's commitment, and includes a billion pounds for the SEND system to help the million pupils in the state education system with special educational needs. This government will make sure all children get the high-quality education they deserve, as well as high-quality school buildings, with funding now announced for the school rebuilding programme, as well as for school maintenance as we begin to tackle the schools' maintenance backlog. We believe these changes are crucial first steps to improve education for all children and to meet the aspirations of parents across the country. Now, Madam Chair, investment in education has to be paid for, and so I will now turn to the focus of this debate, which is our decision to end the VAT exemption for private school fees. In July, the Chancellor announced that the government will end tax breaks on VAT and business rates of private schools. These policies are expected to raise £1.5 billion in the first full year of their policies, rising to over £1.8 billion a year by 2030. I'll give way.
Grateful to the Minister. Could he tell us whether the assumptions on the impact on the market and people with drawn, children being withdrawn from schools has been greater than was expected? And I'd certainly share with him, from my time as a minister, that I always found the Treasury rather underestimated the dynamic impacts of policy changes, and I'd be interested to hear his reflections.
Well, I thank the Honourable Gentleman for his question about the impact of these policies on children's education, and I'll come to the details shortly in my speech, but just to give him some overview of the forecast impacts they will have, we estimate there will be ultimately around 37,000 fewer pupils in the private sector. That's both a combination of pupils who will never enter the private sector in the first place, as well as those who will leave. This represents around 6% of private school pupils, and we expect most of the moves to take place at natural transition points, such as when a child moves from primary to secondary school, or at the beginning of exam courses, but I will come to that in more detail in a moment. I'll give way.
If it is the intention of the government and the Minister that this should happen at natural transition points, why did the government make the decision to impose it from January, which, whatever one's views on the merits of this policy, is not really fair, indeed, one could say is cruel, on the parents affected?
Madam Deputy Speaker, sorry, Madam Chair, it is right that these changes are implemented as soon as possible to raise the funding we need to deliver our education priorities, because as a result of these policies coming into effect in January, the policy is forecast to raise £460 million of additional revenue in 24, 25. We are ambitious about the state education system, and we want to get on with delivering those changes we committed to in the manifesto. I'll give way.
Well, I thank him for giving way, and I must declare that I, like many parents in Surrey, we've chosen independent education for our children. There's an FOI request that came out earlier this week regarding empty school places in Surrey that shows that in the 25, 26 academic year, there are zero spare places in year nine, zero in year 10, and zero in year 11. He will know, of course, that many children of those ages in independent schools do things like international GCSEs and baccalaureate. What's his message to those children who have no place and are going to have their exam training disrupted because of his spiteful policy?
Madam Chair, we know that local authorities and schools already have processes in place to support pupils moving between schools at any point in the academic year. Indeed, analysis carried out by the Department for Education under the previous government suggests that each year there are almost 60,000 secondary school moves that do not take place at normal transition points or over the school holidays. And, as I said, local authorities and schools already have processes in place to support pupils at any point in the academic year where it is necessary for them to move, but we fully expect the majority of these moves to take place at natural transition points or in the school holidays, rather than within the school year. As I've been clear, Madam Chair, ending these tax breaks for private schools has been a difficult decision, but it is necessary to secure that additional funding that will help to support the commitments we have made to improve education for all. I'll give way one more time and make some progress.
The Minister continually refers to tax breaks. They're not. Why can he not just be honest with the House and admit that this is the first time any government in a civilised democracy has imposed a tax on learning and education?
Let me explain to the Honourable Gentleman how public finances work. If you are going to fund a tax relief or a tax break, that is equivalent to public spending, because it is money that cannot be spent on something else. So when the party opposite has committed, through the new leadership that you have, to repealing this policy should you win the next general election, that implies that you are cutting state education, that implies that you are cutting the investment we are prioritising in education for all. No, I will not give way, because I'm making a very clear point here, which is that you have to make choices in politics about what you prioritise, and we have said that the VAT tax cut, tax break for private school fees is not something that we want to prioritise, we want to spend that money instead on improving state education for all children.
Very grateful to him for giving way, a second time, and so grateful for the public finance lesson. He has to surely accept, however, if there is no tax placed on learning in any sector in the educational landscape across the United Kingdom, it's not a break, because it's not a tax break for one section whilst others have it imposed. This is an imposition of a new tax in the educational sphere. It is not a tax break because no educational establishment pays VAT.
Madam Chair, given the record of the Conservatives over the last 14 years, I don't think it is ridiculous to assume they might need some education about how public finances work, given the mess that we inherited and the desperate need for us to restore fiscal responsibility to the public finances. But, you know, restoring that fiscal responsibility to the public finances requires us to take decisions, difficult decisions, but decisions that are necessary to raise the finances to fund our priorities, and we have taken a decision that we will not support having a VAT exemption for private school fees, and we will use the money that we raise to help invest in state education, to make sure that the aspirations of every parent across this country can be fulfilled. And that is a decision I will defend every time I'm in this chamber. I'll give way.
My constituents of Cold Valley would be surprised that there is no tax exemption on tampons used by close to 50% of society, and yet there is a tax exemption on private schools when it comes to VAT, used by less than 5% of the country. Would he not, would he not agree that it is a mark of the priorities of the members opposite that they're so quiet about the, about the former but not the latter?
Right, thank my Honourable Friend for his intervention, and he's right to point out that decisions about VAT and VAT reliefs are political choices, and indeed, the party opposite is showing what side of the choice they are landing on when it comes to education. They are choosing, through their new leadership, to prioritise a tax break for private school fees over investment in state education. That's a political choice, and I am very happy to stand behind where we are on that side of the debate. Now, Madam Chair, I will turn to some of the clauses in detail first by addressing Clause forty-seven. The changes made by this clause will remove the VAT exemption that private schools currently benefit from with regards to education, vocational training, and boarding they provide. Now, let me be clear that this policy does not mean schools must increase fees by 20%, and the government expects schools to take steps to minimise fee increases for parents. Schools can reclaim VAT paid on inputs and make efficiency savings to minimise the extent to which they need to increase fees. Many schools have already committed publicly to capping fee increases at 5% or absorbing the full VAT cost themselves.
The Minister giving way. One of the schools in my area has posed a question when it comes to VAT, they have their fees combined in which they include things like meals. Now, it's not clear from the Treasury guidance whether that would have to be separated out and create another accounting problem to have separate VAT and travel, for example, as part of the fees. Currently, it is all as one unit. Could he clarify, because when I met with the Schools' Minister, he wasn't able to give me an answer, was going to go away and speak to the Treasury, about what that looks like, because that is real impact for them trying to decide how they're going to set out their accounting, on whether it has to be included or they have to separate out the fees into several different blocks?
Well, I thank the Honourable Gentleman for his specific question, and let me just be clear that in my response, I'm not giving tax advice for that particular school, because I would always assume any school would get their own tax advice, but in general, the VAT treatment of a particular supply is determined by the predominant supply, so there are options available to schools. I'm happy to pick it up with him outside of the chamber and to make sure he's got the details in writing, but as I said, I wouldn't want to give specific advice to that school, but it is worth them getting advice on how to treat the VAT treatment of the fees they charge based on what the predominant supply of that is. Madam Chair, to continue, as I was talking about the impact of the policy that we're proposing and the changes in Clause forty-seven, the government analysis suggests that the impact of the VAT policy on private and state school sectors is likely to be very small, ultimately leading, as I was saying a few moments ago, to 37,000 fewer pupils in the private sector. As I mentioned, this includes both pupils who will never enter the private sector, as well as those who will move.
The Minister giving way. A particular subset of pupils affected by this policy are those in receipt of CEA. Now, the revised figures for CEA that were released recently do not fully protect them from the uplift on VAT on school fees. What assessment has the government done to the impact in retention and recruitment into our armed forces and our diplomatic service?
Well, I thank the Honourable Gentleman for raising the question about the continuity of education allowance, because the government greatly values the contribution of our diplomatic staff and serving personnel, and that's why this continuity of education allowance is provided, to ensure that the need for frequent mobility does not interfere with the education of their children. As the Honourable Member may know, the MOD and the FCDO have increased the funding allocated to the continuity of education allowance to account for the impact of any private school fee increases on the proportion of fees covered by the CEA, in line with how the allowance normally operates. Madam Chair, as I was talking about in relation to Clause forty-seven and the impact of these policies, the government has carefully considered the impact and indeed received a wide range of representations covering some of those topics which have already been raised in the debate today. The government received over 17,000 consultation responses and has met through me and my officials with those representing schools, local authorities, and devolved governments. As a result of these representations, the government has made several changes to the legislation, including to clarify the treatment of nurseries. In deciding on the final design of the policy, the government has made sure schools are treated fairly and consistently. Now, I know that a number of Honourable Members have raised with me their concerns about the impact of this measure on particular types of schools and different pupils, and so I'm glad to have this chance to address some of those points. First, to protect pupils with special educational needs that can only be met in a private school, local authorities and devolved governments that fund these places will be compensated for the VAT they are charged to those pupils' fees. And second, as I already mentioned in response to the Honourable Gentleman's intervention, in terms of military and diplomatic families, the Ministry of Defence and the Foreign Office have agreed to increase the funding allocated to the continuity of education allowance to account for the impact of private school fee increases. I now turn to Clause forty-eight. Now, the government is aware that whilst many schools have always offered schemes enabling the prepayment of fees, there were concerning reports of some parents using such schemes in an attempt to avoid these fees being subject to VAT. The government believes that allowing fees paid from the date of the July statement to the date this policy comes into force to be paid without VAT being charged on them would be unfair on the vast majority of families who will not be able to pay years' worth of fees in advance. The changes made by this clause will therefore introduce anti-forstalling provisions, which will apply to all prepayments of private school fees and boarding services on or after the 29th of July 2024 and before October 30th 2024. Finally, turning to Clause forty-nine, this clause sets out the commencement date for these changes, which will apply to any fees paid on or after July 29th 2024 relating to the term starting in January 2025. To conclude, Madam Chair, the reason why the government is raising funding from the changes we are debating today is to help increase investment in the state education system. Every parent aspires for a high-quality education for their children. The removal of the VAT exemption for private schools will help support the government's investment in schools and ensure every child has a chance to thrive. We are determined to be a government that enables the aspirations of all parents to be met, that makes sure all children have the opportunity to succeed, and I therefore move that these clauses stand part of the bill.
I call the Opposition spokesperson, James Wild.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on behalf of the Opposition, and particularly to New Clause eight, but let me start briefly by considering the context in which we are debating this bill. It comes after a budget in which the Chancellor said, "We must have an economy that is growing, creating wealth and opportunity for all." However, Madam Chair, that is not what this finance bill delivers. Instead, the budget is forecast to deliver lower growth, higher borrowing, and higher inflation. The Minister referred to choices, and the government has indeed made choices, they've chosen to tax enterprise, to tax the wealth creators, and to tax the farmers who are, again, outside this place protesting against the family farm tax, and I wonder if the Prime Minister on one of his rare jaunts to this country has gone out to speak to them. But rather than promote opportunity, it was their choice to bring in a new tax on aspiration.
I will, absolutely.
I'm very grateful to the Shadow Minister giving way. When he talks about choices, isn't one of the choices these independent schools are now going to have to make is how they use their own resources, their sports pitches, their bursary scholarships? These kind of things that benefited the wider local community may now have to be turned into fundraising revenue-making machines to be able to deal with that, which in turn means that other schools will not be able to use their community facilities, like football pitches, et cetera, et cetera, may all be charged more or indeed cut completely, as the schools have to make those difficult choices, which isn't good for community cohesion at all.
Well, my Honourable Friend makes an important point, and I think over the last 14 years that we were in government, one of the things that consecutive education secretaries did was to work with the independent sector precisely to open up those facilities in recognition of the public good they were delivering and a benefit to their communities.
Will my Honourable Friend give way? I will.
Further to the excellent intervention from my Honourable Friend, this is exactly what happens with schools in my constituency. If you take Haberdash's school, they partner with 1,400 state school pupils every single week, and when the Minister talks about finding efficiencies, these are exactly the sort of programmes that will suffer, and there is no other place for these students to go if they leave schools in my, private schools in my constituency. So on both counts, everyone is worse off, and this is one of the iniquities of this policy.
Well, my Honourable Friend makes a very powerful point, and I think it just reflects the rush nature of this policy and the inadequacy of the impact assessment that those issues are not even addressed within it.
I will give way.
Thank you very much for giving way, and just on the point, you spoke about a tax on aspiration, sorry, the Shadow Minister spoke about a tax on aspiration, but what is your problem with having aspiration for all children in all of our schools?
Indeed, we're about the 100% of pupils, we're not trying to divide, divide and rule as the party opposite. I'll make a little bit of progress if the Honourable Gentleman doesn't mind, but sadly, this cruel tax that has been imposed midway through the academic year will damage the education of thousands of pupils, and it's sadly typical of the ideological approach we've seen this new government take on education, where they're trashing the record of schools, pupils, teachers, governors, over the last 14 years when we rose up the International League tables.
I will.
Given that there are many on the government benches who've had almost as their life's work the destruction of the private school system, is he as shocked as I am that this flagship policy that the red flag has so often demanded is so underpopulated on the government benches? I thought they would be there cheering the Minister on!
Well, my Honourable Friend makes an important point, and he, I think, will have been here throughout many of the debates we've had on the Finance Bill and indeed the National Insurance, the Jobs Tax Bill, where there were very few Honourable Members on the benches opposite, very few made contributions to defend their first budget for 14 years, and I think we all know, we all know why. And Clause forty-seven removes the exemption for private school fees and spells out what Labour's education tax will mean from the 1st of January. As my Honourable Friend for Hartsmir has already said, doing this mid-year is a cruel measure.
I'm extremely grateful to my Honourable Friend, and further to the point there, I think one of the reasons that there may be so few colleagues opposite is because they actually stood on a manifesto that was all about economic growth, was about, was about protecting farmers, about holding down tax, that's what they stood on. They've turned out they've got this leftist front bench that introduced this pernicious, this pernicious tax midway through the year, and we have an Education Secretary so filled with malice and spite, she can't even bring herself to congratulate the state school, which has been number one in the country three years in a row.
Well, my Honourable Friend makes a typically salient point, and I agree particularly about the lack of the congratulations that the Education Secretary was not prepared to make to the head of Michaela School, which is the best performing school in the country. And putting VAT on independent schools will particularly hurt those parents on modest incomes who are saving to send their children to a school that they think will best serve their needs, and none of those parents are getting a tax break. They're also contributing to funding places in the still state system, whether or not their child takes one up. The clause does exclude the teaching of English as a foreign language, education in nursery, and higher education courses from this new tax, but the government's already crossed the line, it's taxing education and learning for the first time. So will the Minister, when he winds up this debate, rule out widening the scope of this education tax to include university fees, for example? And we on this side are deeply concerned about the impact the tax will have, particularly on pupils with special educational needs, small rural schools, faith schools, and schools taking part in the music and dance scheme, and we've consistently warned of the damage this will do to young people's education, and we voted against these measures in the budget resolutions. And New Clause eight, in the name of my Honourable Friend, the Shadow Chancellor, would require the Chancellor, within six months of the Act being passed, to make a statement to Parliament about the impact of these changes on those groups in particular, as well as the music and dance scheme, and that's needed, because there's such a wide gap between what the Minister's telling us and what their limited impact assessment is saying, and what all Honourable Members who are actually talking to schools and parents know is going to be the case.
I'll give way to the Honourable Gentleman.
The Gentleman talks about talking to schools, I've spoken to schools in my constituency for many years, I'm sure he's spoken to ones in his. The School Cuts website tells us that North West Norfolk has seen a 2.2 million cut in their state schools since 2010. Perhaps he could point to the record where he spoke out against those cuts to those schools?
Well, grateful to the Honourable Gentleman, I think if he checks the record, he'll see that the level of per pupil funding actually increased under the last 14 years, and actually, I congratulate the schools in my constituency who have just received good ratings from Ofsted, a number of them have done so, but there are more than 100,000 pupils, no, I went to this stage, there are more than 100,000 pupils with SEND in independent schools who don't have education healthcare plans, so they will be subject to this tax, it could make it unaffordable for their parents to send their children to those schools that they think are best looking after them, and there will be demand in places where there is not capacity as a result, a number of local authorities have already pointed that out, and that's just going to make the problems that councils are facing with their send budgets, despite the record amounts we put into high needs that they are facing.
Would my Honourable Friend agree with me that this disastrous education tax risks a severe impact on those children and pupils with SEND in independent schools, because this will force children with SEND out of independent schools as fees become unaffordable for their parents, and it risks overwhelming the state provision as there aren't, there isn't sufficient state provision at the moment?
Absolutely, my Honourable Friend makes the point very well, the knock-on impact of this and the damage to those children's education is going to be quite considerable, and more than 40% of independent schools are small schools, they're at the heart of their local communities, they don't have big endowments, they operate on wafer-thin margins, and they simply can't absorb the changes of this magnitude, so it's likely that those schools will cut bursary places that exist due to this new tax, which puts their viability at risk.
I'll give way.
On the issue particularly of SEND funding, the East Riding of Yorkshire is the lowest-funded local authority for SEND per pupil, and children in the Prime Minister's constituency get three times more funding than they do in my own, which I think is a travesty in itself, so this policy is going to put even more strain on my local authority and the children who desperately need support from that local council.
Absolutely, I completely agree with my Honourable Friend, I think this cloak that the government hide behind, that if you've got an EHCP, everything's okay, there's 100,000 children in schools across our country who are going to be impacted by this. The next area we're concerned about is around faith schools, which tend to be smaller and charge lower fees, and the Independent Schools Council has warned that low-cost faith schools will be faced with deficit and closure, and communities will lose access to their assets. There are small religious groups who don't have any state sector provision that can meet their needs as a denomination, and religious groups are mounting legal challenges as a result, battling for the right to educate their children and battling for the right to choose, which we on this side of the House certainly support. And New Clause eight, Section three, also refers to the music and dance scheme, which provides grants to talented young people who could not otherwise attend world-class institutions like the Royal Ballet School. And whilst we do welcome the government's decision, under pressure, to delay tax in schools in this scheme until September next year, that exemption should be made permanent. And to return to one of the points as made, in the budget statement, the Chancellor said 94% of children in the UK attend state schools. To provide the highest quality support and teaching that they deserve, we will introduce VAT on private school fees. That is a deliberately divisive approach. On this side, we support 100% of pupils, we care about all children, we simply believe parents should be able to choose. We've also consistently raised the situation of military families, which the Minister referred to, and have argued that they should be exempt from this tax, which the government did not agree to, but in response to our campaign, the government said, "We will uprate the continuity of education allowance to reflect the increase in school fees from January." Well, Madam Chair, the new CEA allowances have been announced, and as my Honourable Friend for Solihull and West Shirley has pointed out, they fall short of protecting service families from these changes. That will have a direct impact on the retention and recruitment of our armed forces, there are 4,200 children who benefit from this, and they're in place to meet the needs of the armed forces when people have to move around the country or serve overseas, and boarding schools and other provision is the only available option. So given the importance of this allowance for retention of military personnel, why has the government not met the commitment that it made to our armed forces? I'm very grateful to the many organisations who've...
Absolutely.
I'm grateful to the Shadow Minister giving way. Does he think that the new Veterans Commissioner that's coming in under the new government would be primed perfectly to look at this kind of issue, to make sure that both sides of the department, the Defence Department and the Education Department, get the best? Because isn't that what it's there to do, the Commissioner, to look at these kind of problems?
Well, I very much hope so, and I know from my three years in the Ministry of Defence as an adviser just how important this allowance is for, for that retention, and that's why the government breaking its promise is so disappointing. And I'm grateful to the many organisations who've shared concerns about implementation in these clauses, particularly as it is rushed and is taking effect mid-school year. The Chartered Institute for Taxation has called... The Chartered Institute for Taxation has called for a delay, saying they're concerned that neither HMRC nor private schools will be ready to implement the change in VAT liability effectively. In order to meet the midterm deadline, the HMRC has to register these schools in just five working weeks, issues that the new Clause 8 could address. I believe someone's trying to intervene.
I would like to start by saying how deeply grateful I am to the Secretary of State for providing the money to rebuild Tiverton High School in my constituency. It's been a 20-year campaign, and I am genuinely grateful. I'd also like to disassociate myself from some of the comments made by my colleagues to my right. Some of them are personalised and vituperative, and I would not wish to be associated with them. That said, I have Tiverton with... To be on point and to ask a question. Blundell School is in my constituency in Tiverton. Would the honourable member be surprised to hear that when canvassing in Tiverton in areas that might be considered relatively poor, there were numerous grandparents who were saving up money every month to help their children pay for a better future for their children at Blundell School through bursaries?
Absolutely. I completely agree with the point the honourable member makes. It's families who come together, who help out to fund the place for a child, for a grandchild, to give them the best chance in life. And we're not going to criticise people who make that choice. Unfortunately, the government is singling them out with this vindictive measure. This change also represents a significant complication to the tax system, and even HMRC seems confused. The VAT registration for private schools guidance has had seven technical updates since it was published. There's confusion has been referred to about what closely related supply actually means.
On the subject of confusion, he will have noticed the honourable member opposite, who seems not to have noticed that tampons had had VAT removed from them on the 1st of January 2021 by the previous Conservative government. Is my honourable friend, like me, hopeful that that honourable member, however ignorant of changes in our tax law, may join us in the lobbies tonight to oppose this pernicious policy? Because that would be consistent with the views he tried to espouse a little earlier.
Well, I'm grateful to my honourable friend, and we can but hope that the honourable member will join us tonight in the lobbies, and also that he will one day develop the attuned knowledge my honourable friend has about the tax system and the changes that came in in the last parliamentary session. As I was saying, the Association of Schools and College Leaders have also said that there's increased anxiety amongst school leaders who are having to deal with this change in the middle of the academic year. Madam Deputy Chair, this is the first time an education tax has been introduced, and that's why we need to oppose it and to review its impact. The government's very limited assessment estimates that there will be an increase of 37,000 pupils coming into the state sector at a cost of £270 million per year. It also concedes there will be a loss of places equivalent to 100 independent schools closing over the next three years above that that would otherwise be predicted. That impact assessment is thin. Their consultation was flawed. The new education tax is damaging and unfair. I will give way to my honourable friend.
Well, my honourable friend is making an excellent speech. I would say, further to the point that he's made about the impact of this, the government's impact assessment assumes that the closure of places and the loss of places uniformly spread across the country. That will not be the case. There are many constituencies, particularly conservative constituencies represented by Conservatives, where there are large numbers of students who are in private schools. And when those places are lost, it will have a significant impact on local schools, whether or not the places to absorb them.
My honourable friend has his finger right on the pulse. The government claims there are lots of places, but they are not in the places where they will be needed. We've had Hertfordshire, Worcestershire, Buckinghamshire, other areas already pointing out the problems and the concerns that they have. So this education tax is damaging and unfair. We oppose it, and our new clause would ensure the true consequences of this tax on aspiration become clear.
Ewan Sternbank.
Madam Chair, I'm going to try and keep my remarks contained to the state education, because I already know the scope of this debate has went a bit beyond what I have either expertise or time for, considering the critical and urgent relevance of state education to parents, pupils and the people of Falkirk, a rise in support of removing the VAT exemption on private school fees. When Labour entered government in July, we inherited dire public finances and broken public services, requiring necessary decisions to be taken to renew the foundations of the country. The guiding principle of tax decisions taken in this budget was clear: those with the broadest shoulders should pay their fair share so that we can invest in our public services. A critical part of this investing in the future is state education. Using my experience before I entered this place as a local authority councillor, through no fault of the brilliant teachers and education officers that deliver state education, local authorities such as SNP-controlled Falkirk Council have looked to reduce teacher numbers, close school swimming pools, cut additional support and even reduce valuable initiatives such as music lessons. The broader trend of council underfunding in Scotland and across the United Kingdom has left schools underfunded, newly qualified teacher posts scarcer and resources overstretched, and councils with very little room for manoeuvre. Tomorrow, at a meeting of Falkirk Council, there will be a proposal on the table to cut learning hours across the Falkirk district, depriving a child educated in Falkirk of a year of learning time across their primary and secondary schooling journey, and leading to the lowest school hours anywhere in Scotland. A proposal I would note, myself and the Falkirk Labour Group oppose, and they will vote to take off the table tomorrow. In stark contrast to this crisis in our state education system, spending per pupil in private schools is nearly 90% higher than the state sector as of 2023. The gap between private school and state school spending per pupil has more than doubled since 2010. For all the chat about this proposal leading to an unworkable hike in fees, opponents of this measure must match their rhetoric to the fact that fees have on average soared by 55% in real terms since 2003 for those who choose to pay for their kids' education. Lifting the VAT exemption on private school fees will raise 1.8 billion annually by 2030, funding that will and should go directly into state education. This is an essential funding stream that will help relieve the financial pressures on local authorities' education budgets delivered by this UK Labour government. Now, I welcome the Scottish government's commitment to spend all the consequential funding that will flow from this UK Labour government's decision on education in Scotland. And I also welcome the tepid, if understated, support by SNP colleagues. I note that, again, nobody's in the chamber if we're going to go down that line. The opposition's position on this measure is predictable but disappointing when they talk about this measure sacrificing aspiration.
I'll give way tomorrow.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for giving way. And I apologise for interrupting the flow, but is he surprised that SNP MPs aren't here, given their absolutely shocking record in Scotland on education?
I'm absolutely surprised that our SNP colleagues are not here. But again, I welcome their eventual, and again, tepid support during the general election campaign for this measure, something I'm aware in several quarters they've tried to distance themselves from. On the point, as someone who was proudly educated at two Falkirk state schools, Ladeside Primary and Labbert High, I know that 94% of young people in the UK educated at state schools should ever feel like our parents or our teachers lacked aspiration for us. From my conversations with parents, pupils and teachers in Falkirk about their concerns in our state education system, I know that their overwhelming opinion is that we must invest in our state education system as a priority now. In conclusion, if the decision today is billions going into state education annually across the UK, or 1.5 to 1.8 billion for state education less by maintaining a tax exemption for fee-paying institutions, I know what the people of Falkirk's preference is. Falkirk does not need tax breaks for institutions that largely serve the wealthiest. Falkirk does need well-funded state schools.
I come to the Liberal Democrat spokesperson, Munira Wilson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I rise to speak in support of new Clause 9 tabled in my name. New Clause 9 would require the government to produce an impact assessment of the effect of the imposition of VAT on school fees on pupils who have special educational needs but who are without an education, health and care plan. Now, Liberal Democrats have been absolutely crystal clear. We are opposed to this tax on education, and we call on the government to rethink its decision. It is an unnecessary, unfair and counterproductive policy. And in our manifesto for the general election, we laid out our ambitious plan for education, from putting a dedicated mental health professional in every primary and secondary school, to expanding free school meals to all in poverty and tripling the early years pupil premium. At the heart of that vision was the principle that education is the single best investment we can make. All of our children deserve the opportunity to reach their potential. Yet today, too many children are not being supported to achieve that potential. And in our manifesto, we set out a whole host of fair tax rises to pay for this ambitious plan, which didn't penalise the choices that many parents make to choose to invest in their children's education. And I would just gently point out to Conservative colleagues, who have quite rightly pointed out that this is the first time we're seeing a tax on education which is quite wrong on principle, that the only reason the Labour government are able to do this is because of Brexit. Right? And it is those benches on that side who supported the Brexit deal. So I would just point out to them gently that this is something, you know, in principle that they supported.
Like so many Liberal Democrats, she seems to have forgotten. I think she was the first major party to call for a referendum, and it was the British people, not the Conservative Party. The leadership of the Conservative Party at the time was in favour of remain. The people decided. It's about time the Liberal Democrats learned to respect the people's choice.
For that intervention, I would also remind them it was his government that negotiated the Brexit deal. Anyway, I just wanted to put on record that point. But colleagues across the House have spoken frequently in recent months on the crisis facing SEND provision in this country. And we've heard so many stories of struggling families fighting within a failing system to get their children the education they deserve. And after years of Conservative neglect, it is a system that is on its knees. And just this week, we've heard from the Institute for Fiscal Studies of the scale of the problem. Their report laid out clearly, once again, the huge costs that have left local councils on the brink while failing to deliver better outcomes for children. Two out of three, every three special schools are oversubscribed. Just half of education, health and care plans are granted within the statutory 20-week limit, and of those, many are rejected, and 98% are then granted on appeal when parents go to tribunal. It is clear that this is a system that is failing families and failing our vulnerable young people. So is it any wonder, Madam Chair, that parents who feel their children's needs cannot be met in the state system are turning to the independent sector if they can just about manage it? Small schools of less than 100 pupils make up some 40% of the independent sector. In so many cases, these are the schools that struggle and strive each day to provide desperately needed support for SEND pupils, support that sadly is all too often unavailable in their local state school. These are the schools that will be punished under this measure, and those are the families that will need to bear the load. Now, the government has said that those pupils who've been placed by a local authority in an independent school to fulfil the terms of their EHCP will be exempt from the VAT hike. Now, taken in isolation, that is a welcome mitigation to this damaging policy. But there are a whopping 100,000 SEND pupils in the independent sector who do not have an EHCP. Their families will be saddled by this VAT hike. Now, one such family, Madam Chair, came to see me in my surgery a few weeks ago. The parents were in tears in front of me at my surgery, their son who had autism and various other needs. When he was in this local, excellent state primary school, he was actually at risk of exclusion because of the behaviours that were manifesting as a result of his additional needs, which could not be supported in that state primary school. They made the difficult decision to remove him, put him in a local private school where he is thriving and coping well, and his conditions are being managed well. And those parents are not just paying the basic school fees, they're paying an extra £18,000 a year on top of the school fees for the additional support their child needs. All of that will be subject to VAT, which is why these parents were in my office in tears, because they do not know how they are going to meet these costs with a child who was at threat of being excluded from a state school and who is now thriving. That is the human individual reality of this policy, which the minister just waves away in sort of numbers, as if these statistics don't have human stories and faces behind them. I'm very happy to give way.
The honourable member for giving way, she's doing a fantastic job representing her constituents, but she's describing a failed system where people with money can get access to better treatment for their children, and no one envies a parent put in that position. But my hope and expectation is through this policy, we can improve outcomes for all children. And so I fully and expect that the honourable lady shares that objective, but we can't do that by defending the existing system at all costs. This measure will raise income to solve the very problem the honourable lady describes.
Can I thank the honourable gentleman for that intervention? Because he started by saying that I'm describing a failed system, and I am, and I set that out. The SEND system is failing many children across this country. But I would say to him gently, and I made this point to the minister in a similar debate a few weeks ago, that I don't think the level of investment that he is able to make in our state SEND system is going to fix that system. It will take many years and many billions of pounds, which I suspect he and the Chancellor of the Exchequer do not have. And I don't think the answer to that is to penalise those who have scrimped and saved to be able to offer their children that opportunity. If I may, if I could just quote to him another constituent who emailed me, who, she remortgaged her home, cashed in her pension plan and is struggling to be able to send her children to a local independent school again after the local state school couldn't meet her children's special needs. And she said to me, and I think this echoes what the gentleman is partly saying, "Is this fair when other children with the same difficulties as mine are not able to access the same level of help?" "No, definitely not," she said to me. She said, "Believe me, I would never have chosen this route, but I have been left with no choice. Is it fair to punish us further financially for the failings of the state education system? No." So I think we're in agreement, but I don't think the SEND system, the state system, is going to be fixed quickly or adequately enough. And I don't think the answer to that is to level down everybody's opportunities. We need to be, we need to level up opportunities for all and not penalise the parents who've made that choice, often a very difficult choice, to be able to ensure that their child has the opportunity that they wish to give them.
I thank my honourable friend for giving me. And further to the point made by the honourable member for Edinburgh South West, one of the complicating factors in Scotland is that any money which is raised from the VAT on schools throughout the United Kingdom, we have no way of knowing for sure if it will go back in to a state education system in Scotland, which is struggling just as badly, if not worse, than that in England. And on the point of parents with SEND, is there not a danger that what happens is that they take the children, rather than paying the extra fees because they can't pay them, they take the children out of the independent schools, they put them into the state sector, and then that very narrowly stretched resort, the resources which are so far stretched at the moment are stretched even further, and everybody suffers?
I thank my honourable friend for that important intervention. I'm indeed interested to understand how this money will flow back into the Scottish system, if at all. But also, the point she makes has been made not just by me, but by a number of honourable members in the various debates we've had on this issue, that actually it's going to put a much greater strain on the state system, particularly on the SEND system. And that is my real concern here. Now, when faced with the coming price hike, many of the families that I've described will be forced to choose between returning to the overstretched state sector, as my honourable friend has just made the point, where their child's needs may not be met, or they... or they may be forced to try and home educate their child. And now, this is not just a choice with wide-ranging implications for those individual families, but for our economy and for our society too. My new clause nine would force the government to see through the implications of this damaging measures. Now, allow me to repeat, Madam Chair, I and my party are opposed to the imposition of VAT on school fees in principle, but if the government insists on pursuing this damaging counterproductive measure, they should do so with their eyes open. They should be clear on the damage this measure will do, they should be clear on how it will affect parents, and they should be clear particularly on how it will affect children with special educational needs and disabilities. That's what new clause nine aims to do, to lay bare the impact of this measure on those families and children, and those families who are already struggling with a broken send system. And it also looks at the additional children who will be coming forward to apply for an EHCP in order that they may be spared the hike in fees that this government is imposing on them for trying, as any parent would do, to do the very best for their child. Indeed, I received an email from one parent who was discouraged when his child was in an excellent local state secondary school. That parent was discouraged from applying for an EHCP because of the challenges involved, so they made the decision to go to, send their child to a local, well, actually it's not a local, they're sending him quite far away to an independent school where he is doing well. And this Gentleman emailed me and said, well, I'm now thinking we might actually try to get an EHCP, because over a seven-year period, it will save us an awful lot of money if our son is eligible for one. We know that the EHCP system is overloaded and in crisis, so how much more pressure is going to be put on that system, and this new clause nine seeks to measure that. So I urge colleagues across the House to support my amendment, and I urge the Minister once again to rethink this ill thought three policy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No doubt the whole House will join me congratulating the next member on his engagement. I call Doctor, Doctor, how lucky you are, Doctor Jevon Sunda.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you as well to the entire House for their well wishes. Today I speak to rise of our reforms, how you'll raise tax revenue from the wealthiest and use that money to build prosperity for all, because that is the heart of our governing spirit. Because building prosperity for all means creating it for those who cannot afford a decent life, no matter how hard they work. Non-graduates who cannot afford enough to live, the young who cannot earn enough to afford the homes they need. Today, we are proudly raising money from those who can best afford it to create good jobs and build homes across our nation, to create an affordable life for everyone. The tax change, I'd be delighted to.
I thank the Honourable Member giving way, but I must admit, I take exception to this, you know, the people who can best afford it. A lot of parents who send their children to independent schools cannot really afford it, they scrimp and save, so I don't think it's fair to characterise them that way. And if they are forced to remove themselves from those schools, it will not be the schools that suffer, it will be their children that suffer, and there will be an extra burden put on the state system. So it's hardly raising money to help other people.
In my constituency, private school fees are £15,000 per child per year. As a point of fact, almost no one in the bottom 80% sends their children to private school, overall it's 6%, while over half the top 1% send it there. So whilst I appreciate the point, that's not really where the numbers are. If I may continue. The tax changes we are debating today go to the heart of our governing philosophy, that those with the broadest shoulders who benefit the most can carry the heaviest load. We all benefit from roads to drive on, a healthy workforce, hospitals where we need them, and those who gain the most benefit the most, and they are the ones we will ask the most from. Because I will give way.
I appreciate him giving way and his vision of a future prosperous, more prosperous UK, which I think we all share on the general principle across this House, but surely it makes more sense to encourage people to not use the state in terms of provision, and that way we save the state money which can be used for other things.
Well, I suppose the difference in our approach is I don't believe in running down the state sector to be bluffed to use the private sector to get a decent education. Half of schools not having the specialist maths teachers they need, I think a third of those failing their maths GCSE, no, we do have a difference in governing philosophy. The picture for those who cannot afford a decent, go on, I'll give way.
Who else is congratulating the Honourable Gentleman? He's talked about trying to create a fairer society. Does he want to see one in which the parents of the 100,000 children with special educational needs who currently attend independent schools cease to do so? As he will remember, another great economist like himself, Milton Friedman, said, if you want less of something, tax it.
Thank you for his very kind words on that side. As you know, we are fixing on this side those who need special education, there's a huge amount we have to fix this country. We should remember too, the VAT exemption for those with EHCPs, because, Madam Chair, we should remember, for those who cannot currently afford a decent life, it has become increasingly bleak. Non-graduates and young people locked out of the opportunities that their parents had. Now, before the 1980s, non-graduates could leave school and find good jobs with decent wages in their local factory. And then has come deindustrialisation, it has destroyed mid-pay manufacturing jobs, led to a divided nation. We've seen a country where non-graduate men have seen their employment rates fall by 20 percentage points since then. Today, twice as many young men are unemployed as young women, and we are seeing the political shops reverberate around us. Manufacturing jobs destroyed, replaced by low pay and insecure service jobs that do not pay enough to live on. A couple with two children, both on average wages, currently do not earn enough to earn a decent living, and on top of that, young people who cannot afford the homes they need to live in. Around 40% of my generation cannot, are currently living with their mum and dad. I will give way.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker. May I also extend my congratulations to my Honourable Friend on this wonderful day today for him and his family. My Honourable Friend's making an excellent speech, and I would particularly like to highlight a couple of points and ask him briefly something about it. I think his wider points, he's making a very strong case. On the specific point about housing, would he like to say a little bit more about his vision for housing, and in particular, he was coming on to housing, and in particular the needs of young families in many medium-sized towns and cities across the country like Reading, where I represent, the need for more housing, more affordable housing, both to buy and rent?
Can we please be seated? Can we ensure the interventions are very clearly related to the debate in hand, and no doubt the answer will be, Dr Sunda?
Yes, thank you very much. Now, as I'm coming on to, by building the houses that we need, we're getting that revenue from the tax changes we are seeing today. Indeed, that is the entire point of our programme, and as well as that, the planning reforms, of course, that the Honourable Member refers to. Because from the tax revenue that we are raising from this measure and others, that we will build a nation where every person has a stake in our society, a nation where working hard makes a difference, or makes some progress. We're creating good jobs through our measures in the green transition and the caring economy, and yes, building homes for the young to live in. Our Warm Homes Plan will upgrade 300,000 homes and create tens of thousands of good construction jobs, and expansion early years childcare, more women in work, and tens of thousands of more jobs. Our Affordable Homes Programme means more homes for young people, and for those who are struck down by hopelessness, Get Britain.
Please be seated. I assume that this is an appropriate point of order.
We're supposed to be discussing this afternoon, I'm obviously failing to follow its relevance to VAT on private schools, which is, I thought what we were discussing, but I may be mistaken.
... private schools and VAT, forgive me for my husky voice, I don't think that's an appropriate point of order, but, Doctor Sunda, there is no doubt you're going to bring this, your contribution, very close to VAT and schools. I look forward to hearing that, Doctor Sunda.
Thank you very much. The point is that today, when we end the tax breaks for the wealthiest, we are able to raise the revenue we need to invest in our nation's prosperity. That is the point of the programmes we are setting out. Get Britain Working, the Affordable Homes Programme, Expansion Early Years Childcare, you need to raise that money from somewhere, and that's why we are proud of the tax changes we are making. Creating a great nation where every single person and every single child can get a decent education, can get a great job, afford a decent home, and where we all know that working hard means a decent life. Raising tax revenue from the wealthiest, ensuring the broadest shoulders carry their heaviest load, so we can build a nation where every single person thrives. Thank you, Chair.
Damien Hines.
Much, Ms Garnier. I rise to speak to new clause eight and in reference to clauses 47, 48 and 49 for the Clauses Stamp Art Debate. Clearly, just six or so months in, we will not have seen the full effect of these measures, but we will have started to see, and we will have heard, if there are such, concerns from faith leaders, the early effects on the number of applications for education, health and care plans and so on. I think it's also right that we're calling in the new clause for a report back in 18 months' time on the music and dance scheme, on which we know there has been a partial concession from the government, but it remains a very sensitive area. Now, the government says it expects to raise one and a half billion pounds from this measure in 25, 26, rising to 1.7 billion in 29, 30. They expect 3,000 children to be displaced in academic year 24, 25, 14,000 in academic 25, 26, and 35,000 eventually. These are themselves enormous numbers of children having their education potentially disrupted, and parents being denied a choice which is open to them in most places throughout the world. But I think it's also important that we look at the assumptions behind these numbers from HMRC's policy paper, the exact assumptions that may then come into question in that post-legislative review which our new clause calls for. So the government first expects fees to rise on average by 10% as a result of these measures. Now, in fact, the actual mathematical cost of putting 20% VAT on fees is an increase in cost of about 15% by the time you net off the ability to reclaim cost on inputs. But more significantly, you have to put it in the context of everything else that's going on. So also this year, there is the business rates increase for about half of private schools, there is the increase in contributions on the teacher's pension scheme, the TPS, and of course, as with so many other sectors, there's a massive hike coming in national insurance contributions. And those are on top of any other normal cost pressures that other organisations might have. There are three things, as well as the VAT increase, which are direct transfers from the independent school sector to the Exchequer. And although technically speaking, they may not be this measure that we are discussing today, they very much affect the ability, obviously, of schools to be able to absorb any of those price increases. And to inform them what the assumptions they make, or the conclusion they make, about how many children will be displaced to the private sector, they've relied to an extent on a statistic that they say the number of private pupils has remained steady despite a large increase in real school fees since 2000. This is a flawed approach, mathematically flawed approach to consider price elasticity. We historically always used to say in this chamber, up until very recently, we used to talk about 7% of children going to private schools. Now we say 6%. That is because the proportion has come down. And in a time when pupil numbers have been growing, other things being equal, you would expect the number of children at private schools to have been increasing as the proportion stayed roughly constant. And moreover, it makes no sense at all to look at gradual price increases over a 10, 20, or 20-plus year timeframe, and say you can conclude anything from that on the effect of an overnight price increase of 15, 20 or more percent. But they come to this conclusion that we will end up in the long-run steady state with 37,000 fewer pupils in private education in the UK, 35,000 of them, I will.
I thank the right Honourable Member for giving way, and he is absolutely right to interrogate the government's numbers on this. Does he share my concern around particular provision for send with children returning to state school, and the fact that teaching assistance are not fully paid for in state schools, that will be an additional burden on those schools?
Of course, there's been a huge increase in the number of teaching assistants over the last 14 years, but it does remain the case, he's quite right, there are particular issues around children with special educational needs, which I will come on to. So their estimate is that 37,000, there'll be 37,000 fewer children in private schools, and of those, 35,000 will go to state schools. You might say, well, what happens to the others? Well, some will be international students not coming to this country, that is a loss, of course, of export earnings, and some will be home schooled. And that is, actually, the Honourable Lady mentioned that in her speech, and we haven't talked about a great deal, but it is also very significant. And of course, they say, well, it's only 37, 35,000, which, only 35,000. That's like a pretty substantial-sized football stadium, if you want to picture the number of children that you're talking about having their education changed by this. But they say, well, don't worry, because it's only a small proportion of the totals in state schools. So the first thing to say is, look, at the end of the day, this is just a spreadsheet. There is no guarantee that it's going to be 35,000 or any other particular number. In fact, it's rather odd that we try and come up with a single number at all. You would think, in any economic analysis like this, you would at least have a range in which you would have, yes, a central planning assumption, but you would also have a reasonable worst-case scenario. But more important than that, and our right Honourable Friend mentioned this earlier, is that this effect is not going to be even. And I have lost count of the number of parliamentary questions I have tried to, I have put down, trying to get out of the government where they think these 35,000 children are going to show up, because there is a huge difference in where they show up. And it is worthless having empty places in primary schools in inner London if that is not where the children are going to be displaced from private schools. I mean, just in very, very broad terms, there isn't going to be that much impact on state primary schools from this measure. There will be, by the way, on state school sixth forms in London, but the big, big effect is going to be in individual places, particularly in 11 to 16 education, and they are places not only in counties that you might guess, although it includes counties that you might guess, but it also include Bristol and Bury and Surrey and Salford and a much longer list besides. The government also says, and we need to examine this in the post-legislative scrutiny, is why the proposed review is so important. They say the revenue costs are going to be around £270 million a year. That is, in other words, the cost of educating those extra 35,000 children in the state sector. But then they go on to say, we've calculated this number based on the average spend per pupil in England in 2024, 25. Well, that's wrong. It is a mistake to base it on the average pupil, because we know that disproportionately there will be children with special educational needs who are having to transfer, who have obviously a higher cost to their education. Moreover, you probably will get, we don't know how many, but you will get some more families applying for an EHCP, education, health and care plan. Indeed, the limiting case is where a child is right now in a private school, and the parents are paying considerably more than the average place of a state school place. They find they cannot afford the extra 20%, so they apply for an EHCP, and the child gets placed back potentially in the same school, but now that entire cost being picked up by the state. I will.
On that very point, I'm grateful for the Honourable Member for giving way. On that very point, an independent primary school in my constituency of West Orsted told me that approximately 20% of their students would be in receipt of any educational healthcare plan if they were in the state system and had no additional requirements while in their educational establishment. We also, also have a number of pupils who are in receipt of six figures of support. Do you agree that actually those students going into the state system is actually going to increase the cost to the local council, and that these independent schools are saving the taxpayer money?
Well, I'm going to come on to exactly where the cost comes from, because he raises an important point. But before that, can I just say, we've talked about, we've talked about revenue costs, that is what it talks about in the HMRC policy paper. What about capital costs? What if new, whole new places need to be created? What if entire new year groups need to be created? Potentially, you could get entire new, you know, almost, entire new school needs to be created in some individual cities and some local authority areas. Where is the allowance for the capital cost? And then there is the question, as he rightly says, about where the cost is to come from. Now, we know that money follows... Now, we know that money follows the pupil, so for any individual pupil presenting at a new school, that school will get reimbursed for that child's education, although, by the way, only according to when the census date is, so it depends on exactly when they turn up, but they will get reimbursed. The question is from where? So is that coming out of central treasury coffers? Or is the DFE going to be told, now, we've given you your annual budget, if there are more children coming into the state sector, you must fund those? And when it comes to EHCPs, the point we were just discussing, a council's going to be reimbursed additionally if there are more children coming out of independent schools and getting an EHCP in that way? Or again, are they going to be told they have to absorb it out of their already stretched budget? And then there are the indirect costs, like, as by the way, pointed out by trades unions, indirect costs, like teachers potentially being lost to the profession because they get made redundant, it's not at the, not at the turn of the academic year, potentially drop out of the profession altogether. On, I will.
Appreciate the right honourable gentleman giving way. You've spoken at great length and very eloquently about the needs of children with special educational needs. Does he regret the state of special educational needs in this country and the need for some people to feel that they have to pay because they cannot get the service for their children that they would like? Does he regret that legacy of the last government?
To have the very best education available to them. When I was working in the Department for Education, I did actually regard as part of my job that nobody should actually, you know, think, well, I have to go to a, to a private school. I wouldn't have denied them the choice, by the way, and the way that state schools improved over that time actually is, is one of the things that will be driving the fact that it's not seven percent anymore, it is six percent. Special educational needs precisely, and on the high-needs budget, of course, there's a huge amount more money going into high, particularly since twenty-nineteen, the increase in the amount of money going in, well, the gentleman shakes his head, but it's true, it's there in the treasury, in the treasuries, in the treasury's own figures, but it is also true that the demand has increased greatly, and there is, there is much more to do, there's absolutely much more to do to make sure that we have the high-needs system and resourcing that we, that we all want. On the equality's impacts, Ms Garnier, it may surprise some people to know that, of course, independent schools overall on the ISC census figures have a higher proportion of children from ethnic minorities than, than the state sector overall. And of course, as we've been discussing, there is a higher proportion of children with special educational needs. But the really big issue, the really big issue around equalities is on faith. And I'm pleased to note that the Treasury seems to have dropped their earlier assertion that people of faith were not going to be disproportionately impacted by this. I think that assertion can only have been based on the notion that, well, overall, most people with a religious faith are in state education anyway, and they're mostly Catholic or Church of England or, or whatever, in a, in a either denominational or non-denominational school. I don't think you can pretend for a moment that families of the Haredi Jewish community of, in Muslim independent schools or certain Christian traditions, I don't think anybody could pretend that they are not going to be affected more than others. Overall, Ms Garnier, to come to a close, this is a bad policy overall. Education is a public good which simply should not be taxed, and that is a principle which is observed by governments of the left, as of the right, all but universally right across the world. In this country, there is no tax break, and in fact, families who have their children going to independent school save the state's money. Independent schools cater for some needs, like on the music and dance scheme and on small faith groups, that the state sector simply doesn't. And in any case, for whatever reason, they make that choice, parents are entitled to the choice of what they think is going to be right for their child. This measure doesn't even do the job that we think is what gets Labour MPs excited about it. It doesn't hit its target, because not every parent at a private school is rich, and in some of them, like some of the fee-paying Muslim or Jewish Haredi schools I mentioned, the cost of those schools is less, believe it or not, less than the average cost of a place at a, at a state school. And here's the bigger point, there are plenty of parents with children at state schools who are wealthy. So if you really wanted to just soak the rich, if you wanted to just tax the, if you just wanted to tax the wealthy, there are more efficient ways of doing it, quite apart from the fact that there are more honest ways of doing it. And most important of all, this is going to have an adverse effect on state education, especially in those places where secondary schools are already full or almost full. Labour challenge us to say, whose side are you on? Do you stand with the ninety-four percent or the six percent? Well, Ms Garnier, we refuse to choose, because they are all children. There is no need to set one part of our education system against the other, and this tax is going to be bad for both.
Siobhan Ryder.
In my constituency of Leicester East, thousands of hard-working families diligently strive to give their children the best possible start in life. Some choose our excellent state schools, whilst others opt for independent schools that they believe more closely meets their child's individual needs. The crucial point is that until now, these parents have historically enjoyed the freedom to make that choice for themselves, rather than having it imposed upon them from on high. Today, more than one thousand pupils in Leicester East attend independent schools, and their families are not the super-rich. These are ordinary, hard-working people who have scrimped, saved, and carefully budgeted, often sacrificing luxuries and going without, in order to, yes.
Is the right honourable lady, so the honourable lady suggesting that those people who don't send their children to state schools don't budget?
These are ordinary, hard-working people who have scrimped, saved, and carefully budgeted, often sacrificing luxuries, going without, in order to afford an education that they believe is best for their children. This is not the preserve of billionaire hedge fund managers. These are nurses, these are small business owners, and these are tradespeople who have managed their finances meticulously to secure a particular educational path. It is the very working families Labour claims it would never tax. This new measure is fundamentally a tax on education itself, and the reality on the ground is deeply concerning. As a result of Labour's policy to slap VAT on independent school fees, the careful financial planning of hard-working people in my constituency has been shattered. Children are being forced out of stable, nurturing learning environments midterm. Their friendships and routines are severed, not by parental choice or educational necessity, but by a chancellor's whim. To add insult to injury, some families find themselves unable to secure a state school place locally, leaving them in the chancellor's twisted game of educational limbo. I have already heard from one mother who, having lost the ability to afford her daughter's independent school, cannot find a suitable state alternative in her catchment area. And as we've heard in the chamber today, this is not an isolated case, but a troubling sign of the turbulence that this policy is creating. What does the government propose for these children caught in the crossfire of envy-driven politics? Labour's attempt to penalise the perceived privilege has ended up punishing ordinary, aspirational families. Meanwhile, the notion that this will somehow improve state education is fanciful at best. Instead of supporting better standards and opportunities for all, this tax is about pitting one group of parents against another. And what's worse is that this was done without a proper impact assessment. Instead of looking at the real-world consequences, the strain on families, the sudden influx of pupils into our already-stretched state schools, and the emotional turmoil placed on children, the government rushed forward blinded by the politics of envy. And I call upon the ministers to think again. This is not about reform or fairness, it is an attack on parental choice and on hard-working families who dare to hope for something different for their children. If Labour truly stands for working people, then it must listen to their voices, look at the damage this will cause, and scrap a measure that so clearly undermines the interests of children and families in Leicester East and beyond.
Edward Morello.
Madam Chair, the proposal to impose VAT on independent school fees is a misguided approach, and risk harming families, undermining educational freedom, and failing to address the deeper issues within our educational system. Let me start by acknowledging that our state education system is in dire need of funding. Years of mismanagement by previous governments have left schools struggling with inadequate resources, overworked teachers, and outdated, undersized facilities. We must confront this crisis, and I fully agree that we need a long-term, sustainable funding to support our schools. However, introducing VAT on independent school fees is not the answer. This measure will only impact, sorry, this measure will not impact elite institutions or those at the very top of the income ladder. The wealthiest families will simply absorb the cost. Instead, it's the middle-income families, parents who are saving every penny, working multiple jobs, and making sacrifices to help their children who will be impacted. The families whose children have special or complex needs that cannot be serviced in the state school. Smaller, more affordable independent schools which already operate on tight budgets and cater to working families will be at risk of closure. Those closures will displace students into the already overstretched state sector, exasperating the very challenges this policy is supposed to address. Independent schools also contribute to their local communities, they work in partnership with state schools, offering shared resources, facilities, teaching, support, extracurricular activities. Instead of imposing VAT, we should encourage more of these collaborations to strengthen both the state sector and the independent system. Liberal Democrats believe in parental choice and in policies that unite not divide our communities. We must focus on finding equitable solutions to fund our state schools, but we must do so without undermining choices and aspirations of families or the stability of our broader education system. Families should have the freedom to choose the best educational path for their children without being penalised by the state. Madam Speaker, I urge the government to work with all parties to find a fairer way to address the funding crisis in our schools, one that does not come at the expense of parents, students, and the principles of educational freedom.
Karen Muller.
Ms Garnier, I rise to speak in support of new clause eight in the name of the Shadow Chancellor, because these clauses will help ensure accountability for this policy and ensure its impacts are followed in this statement. I want to see that, perhaps more so than the policy itself, but because of how the Labour Party has framed this policy. I found it deeply concerning. I know in this place, all parties are sometimes less than accurate in how we describe tax and spending and how it works for political advantage at different times, but of all the things the new Labour government has done, the one thing I find genuinely appalling is the vindictive way which has rolled the ground for this, by pitching school-child against school-child, parent against parent. I've genuinely found it really deplorable. We do not have hypothecated tax or spending in this country. Money from road tax goes on things other than roads, our national insurance payments do not get put into a pension pot. The government knows this, so to suggest that someone spending on money on their own child without tax is taking away from other children is completely and utterly wrong. The UK government spends more than one trillion pounds a year, the government can choose where it spends that money, to suggest that there is a legally-defined part of money that this tax is going into for education, and if it wasn't there, there'd be less money available for education, is completely without merit. Not least because if there was such a part, for many years, these parents would have been contributing to it and not taking out from it, they would have been already subsidising mainstream education, according to the government's own arguments. The idea that schoolchildren in mainstream education are going without directly because we didn't have VAT in private schools, that because all sorts of parents, for all sorts of reasons, are choosing to invest some of their money in their own children's education, we haven't been taxed in that, that that's why children elsewhere are missing out on their own education, is a deeply unpleasant and unnecessary way to frame this argument. Imagine being a parent, people like I know from modest starts in life, who've gone to medical school, become doctors, become GPs, honest, hard-working people, the fact that they weren't being taxed on that spend, you're making them think and feel that somehow that's been taken away from other children's education, it's completely wrong, it's really the worst sort of politics. And it's been exemplified by the despicable tweet by the Education Secretary that was rightly and roundly criticised. A private school having a swimming pool doesn't in any way at all affect the availability of mental health support in other people's schools, any more than spending extra money on potholes or defence or healthcare does. I reiterate, the government has more than one trillion pounds to spend every year on what it wants and ways in which to raise it. And what does it say to the millions of pupils and parents in mainstream education? What thoughts and feelings does it foster? It fosters resentment and envy without any factual basis whatsoever. And where does it end? There are tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of small businesses below the VAT threshold who provide sports coaching for pupils, music lessons, creative arts sessions. Are there parents who are not paying VAT on the few quid they might spend to send their children to a local football club, stopping other children from having local school supplies? Of course not. But that is the argument that the government is advancing. I know many others will speak about the other material impacts I've just proposed. I have four private schools in my constituency, Threwman College, Battle Abbey, Vine Hall School, and Claremont School. I could speak at length about the impact it's going to have on, on parents, but whatever the policy the government has chosen, I wanted to make sure I came to this chamber and called out the particular manner which they didn't have to do, and which this policy is being justified by Labour MPs and the Labour government. To pick different school pupils against each other in the way the Education Secretary and Labour MPs has, I reiterate, has absolutely no basis in fact whatsoever, and it's the worst possible way to have gone about this policy. The Labour Party has many proud traditions and can point to many noble moments, but this is absolutely not one of them. I hope members on the benches opposite reflect on that.
Doctor Ben Spencer. Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's difficult not to take this very vindictive policy of taxing education personally, and that's not just because, as with many parents living in Surrey, we as a family have chosen to, chosen independent education for our children. It's not only because, as a Conservative, I support all our schools and I want all our children to have the best start in life, it's because lots of different data points show that the Riny Mead and Weybridge constituency is going to be one of the most heavily punished areas as part of this policy. And it's interesting to hear the minister talk in terms of the estimated numbers in terms of children which will move out of the independent sector into the state sector, and what the many independent schools in my constituency tell me, and I speak to them, visit them pretty much, you know, all year round, they've met with me and are desperately concerned about this policy. They've estimated it's about five to ten percent of children who'll need to move out. That's probably around five to, five hundred to a thousand people in the Riny Mead and Weybridge constituency, people, it's children, children who, many of whom have already been disrupted by Covid, many of whom are studying for their exams, have friendship groups which are going to be disrupted, who are going to potentially move into schools which won't be able to provide the same courses or the same exam specs that they're currently receiving, and this disruption. I hear from state schools, who are already, we have lots of pressures in terms of places in these schools, and the minister will have heard from my intervention earlier during this debate, in terms of mission-empty spaces that we have in years nine to eleven, in the next academic year's intake, there is no space, we, we have lots of pressures. This policy is going to cause long-lasting damage to many children. I hope it would, it won't, but I think the reality is it will. Now, look, it's clear that, given the numbers and given the full-throated support on the other side of the House, this policy's going ahead and we're not going to be able to stop it here. But at the very least, can the government support our new clause eight to say, if they're so proud of this policy, which they clearly are, if they're so happy to defend the, what they see as the limited impact on young people, why are they afraid of a proper analysis going forwards? So, Madam Chairman, I would say, please, think again, but I'd be at risk of misleading this House, because clearly, they never fought in the first place.
Sarah Oldie.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The Liberal Democrats do not support imposing VAT on private school fees, we don't support treating independent schools differently to other independent education providers for VAT purposes, and that's why I wish to speak in favour of new clause nine today, tabled by my honourable friend and constituency neighbour, and I'd like to thank her for tabling this amendment, which would require the government to produce an impact assessment of the effect of the VAT provisions in the Act on pupils that have special educational needs but do not have an education, health, health and care plan. Of the six hundred and fifteen thousand children in private schools in this country, almost one hundred thousand are being educated privately because they have special educational needs but do not have an education and healthcare plan or EHCP. Now, the Liberal Democrats are glad that this legislation exempts privately-educated pupils who do have an EHCP that requires a local authority to fund a private school place from VAT on school fees. This is a welcome step, but it does not protect This is a welcome step, but it does not protect those who do not have an EHCP from a steep rise in fees and the parents of many of these children will find that they cannot afford the increase, throwing the future of their children's education into doubt. Moreover, there'll be an increase in demand from the local authorities to issue EHCPs, stating that the local authority must fund a private school place. Local authority resources for special educational needs and disabilities are already stretched to a breaking point and additional demand will be impossible to manage. So the inevitable result...
And she's quite right. The government shares the analysis that our special educational needs provision in our state schools is under massive pressure already and there is a shortage of capacity, notwithstanding the vast increases in expenditure since 2019. And yet their policy, recognising that, is to tax and therefore deter and reduce expenditure on children with special educational needs out of people's private pockets. It doesn't make any sense, it doesn't.
I thank the honourable gentleman for his intervention and I trust that means that the Liberal Democrats can look for his support to our amendment today because the inevitable result of the legislation, if it goes ahead unamended, will be thousands of children with SEND forced into the state sector all at once, which will be enormously disruptive, not just for them but for existing pupils in the state sector, potentially traumatic for those children, as well as being immensely difficult for the state schools to manage. So new clause nine would protect both the children and the schools affected by the impact of these measures. Children who have special educational needs yet do not have an EHCP, as well as the children of families who have applied for an EHCP. But it's not just children with SEND who'll be affected. There'll be many thousands of other children across the country whose parents will find that they can no longer afford to keep them in their current school and these children will experience enormous disruption to their education as they are forced to change schools and for many, the upheaval of being separated from their friends and a familiar environment. And the government should really reflect carefully on whether the benefits of this policy that they are intent on pursuing is worth the damage that it will cause to these children's education and wellbeing. Because this influx will not be evenly distributed. In my constituency of Richmond Park, over 45% of children attend a fee-paying private school. In common with other parts of London, demand for state primary places is down, so younger children will be easily accommodated. But secondary schools are experiencing great pressure for places and a rise in requests for in-year admissions will be difficult to meet. And I think it's worth saying as well that a drop in headcount at the private schools, there may only be perhaps a small proportion of children whose parents are no longer able to meet the fees, but a drop in headcount could see schools closing because they become unviable. And that means that actually the effect of children needing to transfer out of independent schools and into the state sector could be, could be much, much greater than is currently being forecast. And I wanted just to also reflect what the Shadow Education spokesperson and others have said about the music and dance scheme. The Royal Ballet School at White Lodge in the middle of Richmond Park in my constituency is a world-leading ballet school and it has expressed their great reservations to me about the effect on this policy and I would very much like the government to reflect upon that. And if the survey done by the Times newspaper of private school parents earlier this year is accurate and 25% of parents have to withdraw their children from private education due to the government's proposals, then this could have a huge impact on the children in communities like mine across the country. The government proposes that its new tax treatment should only be applied to the provision of private schooling, but taxing some forms of education but not others will almost inevitably create loopholes. Creative accountants will find ways of delivering education services that fall outside the VAT legislation, while other education providers that the government did not intend to tax will unwittingly find themselves caught up in it. The risks of these distortions increase if the legislation is hastily framed with insufficient time for scrutiny. Between parents who cannot afford to pay their children's fees and schools which cannot keep their doors open, the state will need to find space and resources for an influx of new students. So in conclusion, the Liberal Democrats are opposed to the government's plans to impose VAT on private school fees because we believe that it's wrong to tax education. Imposing this increase in fees will have a disproportionate impact on children with SEND, which will not just create hardship for those children and their parents, but also enormous difficulties for the local authorities and state schools that will be required to provide alternative schooling. And that's why I join the calls of my colleagues and urge the government to support this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
And I go to the final backbench contribution, no doubt, saving last, Lewis Cockling.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman. And I'll start off by saying I'm a Hertfordshire County councillor and it is that authority that will have to pick up the pieces if parents can't afford the VAT on private schools or private schools close. And a bit like the farming debate, I have a specific example from my constituency of Broxborn, which tears down the government's argument about adding VAT to private school fees. Turnford is a secondary school, was, sorry, a secondary school in my constituency, is, sorry, in my constituency that was in decline. Academic standards and behaviour were poor, the quality of teaching was inconsistent, leading to students becoming demotivated and achieving less than the national expectations. Staff suffered from low morale and there was a significant recruitment challenges and the school buildings were dilapidated and it was on a very poorly laid-out site. But thanks to a unique partnership with Hayleybury, an independent school in my constituency, the tide began to turn. In 2015, the school was relaunched as Hayleybury-Turnford Academy with Hayleybury as the sole sponsor. A generous annual improvement grant was established, worth £200,000 a year. And that has gone, that has gone for about five years now, so it's over £1 million that has gone directly into a state school in my constituency. This has enabled Turnford to recruit much-needed staff, retain high-quality specialist teachers. Hayleybury also gives financial, additional financial support for Turnford's SEND students and provides opportunities for the wider breadth of academic and extracurricular activities such as supporting programmes for the gifted and talented pupils. Academic standards, because of this partnership between state and private schools, have been transformed. We've had new classrooms constructed and in 2022, Hayleybury-Turnford was judged by Ofsted to be good for the first time in the school's history.
I thank the honourable member for giving way. He seems to be making the case that he's been seeing a pilot for this national policy happening in his own constituency where higher fees presumably to pay for that £200,000 a year grant to the state school were being paid for by the attendees at the private school. So his example makes the case for exactly this policy on a wider scale.
It's their choice, the parents' choice.
I thank the member for his, honourable member for his intervention. If he just waits for the next part of my speech, he may get the answer to his intervention. But the government's plan will put all that at risk. Notably, Hayleybury are planning to absorb as much of the financial hit as it can rather than place the extra burden on parents. And to do so, they must look at reducing expenditure and therefore their ability to offer financial support to Hayleybury-Turnford, painfully contradicting the government's argument that this policy will result in more spending on state school pupils. It's not just about money. Greater financial pressures on Hayleybury will inevitably lead to staff having less time and resources available to share with Turnford and less opportunities for the state school students at Hayleybury-Turnford as a result. Ministers think this policy will only impact the rich, but for nearly a decade now, genuinely, a genuinely working-class community in my constituency of Broxborn has benefited from a state school and an independent school working together, which is exactly the kind of partnership that we should be encouraging and we should not be encouraging, the politics of envy. And sadly, the government's changes that they are introducing through this bill will bring all of that to an end.
We now come to the wind-ups. I don't believe that the Shadow Minister, okay, I now come to the Minister, James Murray.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And may I begin by thanking all honourable members for their contributions in today's debate. I'll take a few moments to respond to some of the points raised during the debate on these clauses and then to set out the government's view on the proposed amendments. Firstly, in the opposition, the Shadow Minister's comments, he addressed the amendment tabled by his right honourable friend, which I'll come to in a moment, but specifically, let me reassure him for the avoidance of any doubt that higher education and TAF are both exempt from this policy, they're not affected by it. And I can also reassure him that HMRC stand ready to support schools. HMRC have already published bespoke guidance for schools, they've run webinars, updated registration systems and put additional resources in place to process applications.
Can the minister tell us what is the in-principle difference, the distinction, between private education, full-time schooling and private tuition from the point of view of what is right to put tax on? And would he guarantee that there is no tax going to be put on private tuition?
Well, if the honourable gentleman is referring to the comments I was just making in response to the Shadow Minister's remarks, teaching English as a foreign language, higher education, they're exempt from the, they're exempt from the provisions of this bill? Okay?
I mean, I mean, families who have their child go once or twice a week for an hour, sometimes it's an academic study, sometimes it's something extracurricular. What is, what's the difference in his mind between why that should be tax-exempt, but somebody who does it for all the hours in the school week should not?
Well, in designing this bill and making sure the legislation is clear, we've decided to focus very clearly on those schools that provide full-time education and that's why we've designed this bill in this way. And actually, if you look at some of the feedback that we had during the consultation on this bill, we've decided to clarify some of the treatments, for instance, nurseries, which I mentioned earlier, to make sure that nurseries are treated appropriately. So if they are fully standalone nurseries, they are not covered. In the original drafting of the legislation, we referred to nurseries which are wholly comprising of children below the compulsory school age. We changed that to wholly or almost wholly to ensure that by having, for example, one pupil who is over the compulsory school age wouldn't trip in nursery. I'm going to make some progress because I'm going to come to the honourable gentleman's point in a moment because I also wanted to mention, I wanted to mention what some of the other honourable members spoke about during this debate. We heard from the honourable members for Twickenham and Richmond Park, but, you know, I'd like to say, Madam Chair, that yet again, what we see from the Liberal Democrat front bench is a party who is happy to support our extra investment in education for all children, but just cannot bring themselves to support the measures we put in place to help pay for that investment in education. I'll give way.
Gentlemen of Giving Way, we've heard this point time and time again from the Labour benches and I just want to say one more time, the Liberal Democrats put forward a fully costed programme in our, in our 2024 general election manifesto. It had a range of tax-raising measures that would have paid for the changes that we would have liked to have seen and it didn't include VAT on school fees for all the reasons that you've heard from us today.
Madam Chair, the reason why the Liberal Democrats hear this time and time again from the government benches is because time and time again, they want all the benefits of extra investment without having to pay for it. And that is a pattern that we see again and again in this chamber. No, I'm going to make some progress. I would also like to thank my honourable friends from Falkirk and Loughborough for their comments. And I may add, as I feel I am duty-bound to do, my congratulations to the honourable member of Loughborough on his engagement. The honourable member for Hinkley and Bosworth, I think is not here right now, he's, yeah. The honourable member from Hinkley and Bosworth is not here right now, oh, there he is, sorry. He asked an important question, to try and get some clarity about the VAT treatment of combined fees which cover, sorry, school fees, maybe he could come around there and it'd be easier. Combined fees that cover school meals and transport and so on, other services. I hope that my answer earlier gave him some reassurance on that whilst to reiterate the point that I can't provide advice for individual schools. I think it's worth, you know, emphasising that the general principle here is that if you supply a package of education for a single fee, this will normally be a single supply for VAT and that package could include a number of other elements like transport or meals alongside the main element of education. And if it's a single supply, then it's a single VAT liability. However, whereas schools supplies education and also supplies other elements for a separate fee, then that will normally be treated as a separate supply. So for example, if a school offers school meals alongside the education for a separate charge, these will normally be two different supplies and they may have different VAT liabilities. So although the education would be standard, subject to the standard rate of VAT, the school meals may be exempt if they meet the conditions.
I'm grateful for his clarification on that point. I think he's hitting towards it because the school itself does have it all grouped into one fee that includes the transport and the school and the food. Therefore, their contention is they are going to have to break that all out, which adds on all the accounting issues that you're going to have to deal with on top of that, which is another burden to think about. And I just wondered if the Treasury has done any thought about that or any further guidance because it is literally just one line in a piece of written guidance out from the Treasury. Is there a place that they can raise this issue up to work through that exact advice that they need, which I appreciate the minister can't give directly to them from the dispatch box?
Well, the way that we treat private school fees and other charges that private schools may levy has to be consistent with the VAT principles more broadly, which is why I've tried to explain how the supply of education and the supply of other elements would interact with the VAT system more widely. I'm going to hold back from giving specific advice about that individual school, but what I would encourage them to do is to contact HMRC, contact HMRC to get advice about their specific registration. But I hope if they read handshads and the note of what I've just said, they will see some information which may help them to understand how to approach this issue.
Who has ever has been very gracious in giving way. Could you explain if someone were to establish a new educational establishment providing entirely modular educational elements that people could choose in between them, would that individually or collectively be subject to VAT or not?
The honourable gentleman is tempting me into hypotheticals and trying to give advice for schools that doesn't exist yet, which I'm going to hold back from because I think the principles of our bill are very clear in terms of what they apply VAT at the standard rate to and what can be exempt in line with the existing rules on VAT. We also heard several times from the honourable member for East Hampshire and I can reassure him, of course, that the government costing has been fully scrutinised and certified by the Office of Budget Responsibility. He also spoke about capital funding. Now, obviously pupil numbers fluctuate for a number of reasons and so the government has already announced over £700 million to support local authorities over this academic year and next to provide places in new schools and to expand existing schools. But I did note, Madam Chair, in the honourable gentleman's remarks in response to the intervention from one of my honourable friends, he seemed implicitly to admit his government's failure to improve high-needs education in the state sector and that is precisely why our measures today are so important. And I will give way.
I did no such thing. I spoke about the additional investment that had gone into the high-needs budget under the previous government, particularly since 2019, and said there was more to do. But since I'm on my feet, can I ask him to expand on what he just said about capital? Because what he's just said about capital is about capital places for places already planned. The question is, what if there are a lot more children present in some places? Has he budgeted for that capital and does he guarantee that whatever capital is goes to the DFA on top of their existing capital budget?
Well, as I said to the honourable gentleman, pupil numbers in schools fluctuate regularly for a number of reasons and the Department for Education and indeed the devolved governments already work with local authorities to identify pressures and take action where necessary. And as I said in my earlier remarks to him, the government already provides capital funding through the Basic Need Grant to support local authorities in England to provide school places and the government's already announced £700 million over this year, academic year and next, which can be used to provide places in new schools and to expand existing places. Madam Chair, just finally to respond to the comments by the honourable member for Beckhill and Battle, he raised a theme that other members on his side of the chamber also spoke to around the motivation behind our policy. So let me be really clear on this, Madam Chair, that our decision to fix the public finances, to fund public services, including education, means that difficult decisions have to be taken. Our choice to end the VAT exemption for private school fees has been a difficult but necessary decision that will help secure additional funding, which will help deliver on our commitments to improve education for all.
Talking about motivation in my speech, what I talked about is how you framed it. Does he accept that with a general taxation pot where all the money goes into one amount of money is dulled out as the government sees fit? There is absolutely no reason or basis for saying that children in the state sector have got less because of the exemption of VAT in private school. The two things are totally not connected in the budget and financing of the government.
Madam Chair, what is connected is that if we want to fund public services and fix the public finances, we have to take difficult decisions and this is one of those difficult decisions we are taking today. A difficult but necessary decision to restore fiscal responsibility after the mess we inherited from the party opposite and to fund our public services. It is necessary to take those decisions so that we can get that funding into education for all. And if he does not want to take that decision, then he is, he is in effect denying the choices we are making about funding public services. Madam Chair, I'm going to make some progress now to address the specific new clauses which are tabled by members of the opposition front benches. And firstly, the new clause tabled in the name of the right honourable member for Central Devon, which would require the government to make a statement to Parliament about the impact of removing the VAT exemption for private school fees within six months of the Act being passed. This new clause says it must include details of the impact on pupils with special educational needs and disabilities, small rural schools and faith schools. needs and disabilities, small rural schools and faith schools, and it would require the government to make a statement about the impact of the removal of the VAT exemption on schools that take part in music and dance scheme within 18 months of the Act being passed. I'd like to take this opportunity to make clear that in developing this policy, the government carefully considered the impact it would have, including the impact it would have on pupils with special educational needs and disabilities, rural and urban schools, faith schools, and schools that take part in the music and dance scheme. As I've said before, the government also considered a wide range of representations, including over 17,000 consultation responses before finalising the policy design. The government set out the expected impact of the measure in a tax information and impact note published at Autumn Budget 2024 in the usual way. Now, I've already set out earlier today, Madam Chair, how the government will make sure that those children with an EHCP or its equivalent in other nations will not be subject to VAT on any private school fees. Now, I am not clear whether the right honourable member's amendment, when he refers to pupils with special educational needs and disabilities, refers to only those in the private sector, or whether he intends the new clause to consider also the million or more pupils we send in the state system. Of course, if it is the latter, then I am sure he will welcome the extra billion pounds of high-needs funding next year that we have been able to announce, thanks to our decisions on tax policy, including that which we are debating today. In addition, based on the evidence provided, it is not apparent that small faith schools will be more affected by this policy than other schools. So, Madam Chair, the opposition spokesperson from the member for Twickenham also tabled a new clause, and I think I have addressed most of those points already in my remarks today. So to conclude, I hope I've been able to reassure members that the new clauses today are not necessary for the reasons I set out. I therefore urge the House to reject new clauses eight to nine, and I beg to move that forty-nine to forty- forty-seven to forty-nine stand part of the bill.
The question is, that clause forty-seven stand part of the bill? As many of their opinions say aye?
Aye.
Off the contrary, no?
No.
Decision, clear the lobby. The eyes to the right were 338, the nose to the left 170. So the eyes have it, the eyes have it. Unlock. The question is, that clause forty-eight stand part of the bill? As many of their opinions say aye?
Aye.
Off the contrary, no?
No.
Clear the lobby. Danny Kruger, Danny, Danny. The question is, as on the order paper, as many of their opinions say aye?
Aye.
Off the contrary, no?
No.
Tarens for the ayes are Marty McCluskey and Gerald Jones. Tarens for the noes are Rebecca Paul and Paul Holmes.
The eyes to the right, three hundred and thirty-two; the nose to the left, one hundred and seventy.
The eyes to the right, three hundred and thirty-two; the nose to the left, a hundred and seventy. The eyes have it, the eyes have it. Unlock! The question is, the question is that clause forty-nine stand part of the bill? And many of that opinion say aye?
Aye!
On the contrary, no?
Aye!
On the contrary, no? I think the ayes have it, the ayes have it. New clause eight has been selected for a separate decision. Malstride to move new clause eight formally. The question is that new clause eight be read a second time. As many of that opinion say aye?
Aye!
On the contrary, no?
No!
Clear the lobby! Lock the doors! The eyes to the right are one hundred and sixty-seven. The nose to the left are three hundred and twenty-nine. So the nose have it, the nose have it. Unlock. We now go on to the second grouping of debate, stamp duty land tax. We will begin with clause fifty stand part, with which it will be convenient to consider the clauses and new clauses as on the selection paper. The question is that clause fifty stand part of the bill. I call the minister Tulip Sadek.
Madam Chair, this is a budget to fix the foundations of the economy, deliver change by protecting working people, fixing the NHS and rebuilding Britain. The government is achieving this by taking difficult decisions on tax, spending and welfare to repair the public finances and increase investment in public services and the economy, to rebuild Britain and unlock long-term growth. This finance bill delivers on a number of the government's priorities for tax reform, prioritising stability for businesses making investment decisions and ensuring that fairness and sustainability in the long term. We will come to discuss the full range of manifesto commitments delivered in this bill throughout passage, but for today, I want to talk about an area where the government has decided to go further than our manifesto commitment. Madam Chair, these clauses increase the higher rates of stamp duty land tax on purchasers of additional dwellings by individuals and of dwellings by companies from three to five percentage points above the main residential rates of SDLT. These clauses also increase the single rate of SDLT payable by companies and other non-natural persons when purchasing dwellings worth more than £500,000 from fifteen percent to seventeen percent. These clauses will support home ownership by ensuring that those looking to move house or to purchase their first property have a greater advantage over second home buyers, landlords and companies purchasing dwellings. These changes will raise £310 million per year by 2029, 2030, which will be used to support the government's first steps and other priorities. One of our manifesto commitments was to increase the non-resident SDLT surcharge by one percentage point. The government has decided to go further than this commitment and increase the higher rates of SDLT known as higher rates for additional dwellings. This will raise more money than the manifesto policy, helping to restore economic stability and address the £22 billion worth of unfunded pressures, as well as supporting delivery of the government's first steps. Increasing the higher rates for additional dwellings will also go further to rebalance the housing market in favour of first-time buyers and those moving house. We estimate that approximately half of those paying the non-resident surcharge will also pay the higher rates for additional dwellings. I give way.
I'm very grateful for her giving way and she mentioned first-time buyers. However, the change in the stamp duty is likely to affect them because they're now being brought into paying stamp duty. So I'm just wondering how that helps them try to relieve their aspiration of actually getting on to the housing market.
I can tell him very confidently that the thing that will help first-time buyers most in this country is if we build more houses, which his government absolutely failed to do, but we will be doing. We estimate, now going back to the bill, we estimate that half of those paying the non-resident surcharge will also pay the higher rates for additional dwellings. This means a non-resident purchasing additional residential property worth £300,000 now pays £23,500 as a result of the change in rates compared to £17,500 before the changes, an increase of £6,000. This compares to a UK resident purchaser buying their first home who pays no SDLT and a UK resident home mover who currently pays £2,500. This change therefore improves the comparative advantage of UK resident home movers and five first-time buyers, the honourable gentleman might be pleased to know, whilst ensuring that no additional barriers are faced by those coming to the UK and buying their first or only home. Those buying an additional property before they can sell their main residence will be liable for the higher rates of additional dwellings. However, this is refunded if the previous main residence is sold within three years of the purchase of a new main residence, or longer if there are exceptional circumstances such as dues, such as delays in cladding. This ensures that only those who are genuinely liable for higher rates are required to pay them. Turning to clause fifty, clause fifty increases the higher rates of SDLT on purchase of additional dwellings by individuals and dwellings by companies from three to five percentage points above the main residential rates of SDLT. This applies to transactions with an effective date on or after 30th October of this year or before 1st April of next year.
Does the minister agree that this government's decision to raise the stamp duty in such a manner is vital for tackling the plague of second homes that we've seen in communities such as Cornwall?
I thank the honourable gentleman for his intervention and it's something I've also seen in my own constituency, so I know what he's referencing and that is our intention to tackle it, but also these are decisions we had to make because of the economic inheritance that we had when we got into government, which obviously the party opposite hid during the election. So we've had to make some difficult decisions and this is how we plan to fix the foundations of our economy. But transitional rules apply for transaction where contracts were exchanged before the 30th of October 2024, but which completed on or after that date. This means that buyers who legally committed to buying their property before or on the day the rate changes were announced will not have to pay more tax than they expected to pay. Turning to clause fifty-one, fifty-one makes the same rate increases as clause fifty, but applies to land transactions with an effective date on or after the 1st of April 2025. These two clauses will provide an advantage for first-time buyers and those moving home, helping to support home ownership. The OBR certified costings estimates that increasing the higher rates for additional dwellings by two percentage points is expected to result in 130,000 additional transactions over the next five years by first-time buyers and other people buying a primary residence. Yes.
I'm grateful to the minister. I'm surprised though, Madam Chair, that she hasn't declared her interest because I believe she is herself a landlord and presumably owns another property. So to cast aspersions on people who do as some kind of plague, I think is a little unfair. She would, I assume, from this measure, expect there to be some impact on the rental market, right? That this is designed to deter people from becoming landlords and given that ninety-odd percent of our rental properties in the UK are owned by people who have two or fewer properties, what is the scale of that impact that she's expecting? How many people are likely to either exit being landlords or particularly in somewhere like London, not bother being landlords at all? And what will be the wider impact, given that in somewhere like the capital where she represents, there are lots of people who have no option but to rent because they're unable to accumulate the deposit required to buy a property at inflated value? Are we going to see fewer rental properties in the capital?
Thank you. I thank the honourable gentleman for his intervention. I am a landlord, it is absolutely declared in my register of interest. If I was meant to declare it for the purposes of this debate, I do apologise, but it is referenced very clearly in my register of interest. I would say as a landlord, I'm very happy to pay extra tax if it's necessary to fix the foundations of our economy. And I don't agree with his assessment of London, I think we're more resilient than that, especially Camden, and I think we'll be fine. So turning to clause fifty-one, these two clauses will provide an advantage for first-time buyers and those moving home. It will help to support home ownership. The OBR certified costing estimates that increasing the higher rates for additional dwellings by two percentage points is expected to result in 130,000 additional transactions over the next five years by first-time buyers and others buying a primary residence. I hope that addresses some of the concerns from the opposite side. Now turning to clause fifty-two, it introduces special transitional rules to ensure no additional taxes payable for land transaction substantially performed before the 1st of April 2025. And in most cases, SDLT is charged at the point of completion in the property buying process. In some cases however, where the buyer has performed their purchase by paying for the property or taking possession of it, the tax is chargeable at that earlier point. This clause in question ensures that buyers who perform their transactions will not pay more tax as a result of the changes in rates brought about by clauses fifty and fifty-one when they complete their purchase. Turning to clause fifty-three, clause fifty-three increases the single rate of SDLT payable by companies and other non-natural persons when purchasing dwellings worth more than £500,000 from fifteen percent to seventeen percent. The single rate of SDLT was introduced alongside the annual tax on envelope dwellings to deter the practice of buying and owning UK residential property within a corporate wrapper by increasing the rate companies pay. The single rate applies where companies and other non-natural person buy a dwelling for more than £500,000, which they do not intend to use for a relivable purpose such as renting the property or developing it. Increasing the single rate keeps it aligned with the highest rate of tax paid on purchases of the most expensive residential properties, so it remains effective as a deterrent to enveloping. In summary, increasing the higher rates of SDLT will ensure that those looking to move house or purchase their first property have a greater advantage over second home buyers, landlords and companies purchasing dwellings. This measure will raise more money than the manifesto policy and go further to rebalance the housing market. The changes will raise £310 million per year by 2029 to 2030, which will be used to support the government's first steps and other priorities. I've already given way once to him. Increasing the single rate keeps it aligned with the highest rate of tax paid on purchases of the most expensive residential property, so it remains effective as a deterrent to enveloping. I therefore move that these clauses stand part of the bill. Thank you.
James Wild.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And we now turn to the important issues of taxes on residential property and another set of tax raises from this tax-raising Labour government. And I will speak to clauses fifty to fifty-three and also to our new clauses six and seven. Over fourteen years in government, we delivered 2.5 million additional homes. Our manifesto pledged to build a million in the course of the last Parliament was met. We delivered on our commitment to build the homes people need for a more secure future. But this bill introduces measures that dampen the housing market, increase pressure on housing supply and reduce labour mobility. And while the government talks about helping renters, experts are warning these measures could increase rents and it does nothing for those who cannot afford to buy their own home.
So does he not agree that reducing the prevalence of second homes is a crucial part of ensuring that people can afford to live and work in the communities that they're from?
Indeed, representing an area with some of the most attractive coastline in the country, I certainly recognise and share those concerns, but the warnings that people have made are that these measures could actually make the issue worse because people also need to be able to rent in those areas. And if we see people move from long-term lets to short-term lets, that does nothing to help local people who need to work where the jobs are. I will give way.
I'm grateful for giving way and I think the point is a valid one of what the government's trying to do is to get more properties for people to be able to buy. The problem is at the same time when you're changing the threshold back for first-time buyers, they're the ones who are going to be stifled when they want to buy a house because they're going to have to pay more tax on top of doing that. So doing both these measures simultaneously seems to cause a rub. Does the right honourable gentleman agree with me?
I do agree with my honourable friend. I think it's just another example of how the measures in this bill and the impact assessments such as they are are incredibly thin and don't get into the detail and the complications that come with it and are, I would say, wholly inadequate. And under clauses fifty to fifty-three, taxes on property purchases will, as the minister said, go up by £310 million, with clauses fifty and fifty-one increasing the rate for additional dwellings, for example for buy-to-let properties and residential properties, increasing from three to five percent. Nationwide estimates that that could bring extra costs of £4,000 on the purchase of a typical rental home. At least clause fifty-two ensures that where transactions have been substantially performed before these increases, then no additional tax will be charged on those. And clause fifty-three amends the single rate on purchase of dwellings for more than £500,000 by companies. But let's not forget that the government has also chosen not to renew the nil-rate stamp duty threshold, which is currently £250,000, but will halve to £125,000, which I don't think the economic secretary mentioned in her remarks. And as I alluded to, experts have warned that these changes could have damaging effects on the rental market, making it less attractive to provide homes for private rent and rents increasing as a result of the limited supply. And every honourable member will know from their constituency the huge demand there is for rental properties. According to Zoopla, on average, there are around 21 people chasing every property that's put up for rent. And this tax will do nothing to encourage supply of new decent rented housing.
I'm grateful to the shadow minister. I hope he, like me, shares his surprise at the minister agreeing to pay the stamp duty retrospectively on her flats. Let's hope that check makes its way to HMRC. When stamp duty reaches penal rates, it's not only that it diverts necessarily people away from becoming landlords, but that they may operate differently. Does the shadow minister think there's a strong possibility that we might see a large number of properties in places like London owned by foreign corporations that are domiciled in other jurisdictions, such that the transfer of property can take place by the transfer of the corporation's ownership in, say, the Isle of Man or Cayman or somewhere like that, which would not mean that any stamp duty is payable at all on the transfer of the property? And if we see this proliferate, we might find that large numbers of properties in the UK are owned by overseas entities precisely because of the penal taxation here.
James Wild.
Well, my right honourable friend makes a very interesting point and I bow to his knowledge of the situation in London is far greater than mine. I think that's partly why our new clauses are about reviewing the impact of this measure. So if we did see such activity which would go against the objective... So if we did see such activity, which would go against the objectives that the government set and would weaken the rental market, then action could be taken. I hope the government would look at that evidence. And the Institute for Fiscal Studies has also criticised this change, saying it again reduces transactions, increases again the bias in favour of owner occupation and against renting, and at least part of the consequence will be to reduce the supply of rental housing and so to increase costs. The National Residential Landlords Association have said the tax changes in the budget will make it less attractive to provide homes for private rent. They've warned that this measure will exacerbate the shortfall that honourable members will all be familiar with, and an assessment they commissioned a couple of years ago on the impact of increasing the rate to five per cent showed that over a ten-year period, there could be a loss of over five hundred thousand private rented homes. I give way to the honourable member.
George Fenton-Glynn.
Thank you very much. Norfolk County Council, which of course you represent, has a housing waiting, sorry, I beg your pardon, he represents, has a housing waiting list of one thousand three hundred and forty-one homes. That's up four hundred since he was elected in twenty nineteen. If it is about reviewing what actions, the impact of actions, perhaps he could take a moment to review the impact of the last government's actions that saw the housing waiting list rise in his constituency.
James Wild.
Well, I'm grateful for the honourable member's intervention and also his interest in my constituency. He intervened on me earlier to talk about education in North West Norfolk. I simply note, well, I don't doubt the figures, I simply note that in King's Lynn and West Norfolk Borough Council, which is the Borough Council that is, represents my constituency, they have met the housing need target that they have been set. There are thousands of homes being built in and around King's Lynn, which will be a mixture of tenures to rent and to buy. And one of the big blockers is the government has not yet approved schemes which the previous government was committed to for the roads, for the infrastructure that's needed to bring that housing online. So I hope that the minister will take forward those conversations with her colleagues because if the government's going to meet its one point five million pound housing target, then it needs councils to deliver, and that needs funding the infrastructure. So I'm grateful for him enabling me to make that point. So we are, we're concerned about the increased cost of private rents and the supply of rental properties due to this latest tax increase. And new clause six therefore requires the Chancellor to publish an assessment of the impact of the increased stamp duty rates on the private rental sector within six months of this Act passing, of course.
I'm very grateful for giving way, and it's really important to have transparency on this. If we take, I don't think it's controversial to say we need more houses on both sides of the House, but let's take Leicester, for example, when the new housing targets have been reduced by thirty-one per cent. We're now going to have an exodus of people renting in the market here, offering rental residences. Isn't this going to compound the problem acutely because we're not going to have the numbers? They've actually been dropped in Leicester, and yet we're going to have more people needing to rent. So the homeless rate could potentially go up on this basis because people are leaving the market. The government needs to think very carefully about what this looks like, and this amendment would do exactly that, show some light on the transparency that's needed to prove whether there is or isn't a problem here.
James Wild.
Well, I'm grateful to my honourable friend. He draws attention to what could be the unintended consequences of this measure, and I wonder how much involvement the Deputy Prime Minister and her department has had in drawing up this measure, or whether it was one that was drawn up in the Treasury just to get a line into the Red Book to fill some of the spending plans that the government has. And new clause seven would require the Chancellor to publish an assessment of increased rates for additional dwellings, having on the housing market as a whole, particularly the demand for homes in England and Northern Ireland. And Pegasus Insights have reported that nearly twenty per cent of landlords across England and Wales sold homes over the last twelve months, significantly more than the eight per cent who purchased properties in the same period. And what we're seeing is increased rents as a result. The latest ONS figures show average UK private rents increasing by eight point seven per cent in the twelve months to October. When the cost of living is high and rents are increasing, why are the government taking steps that can make matters worse for our constituents? And the measures in these clauses, to the point that the honourable member made, may always so increase the chance of properties switching from long-term to short-term lets, which is a concern in my constituency. And with all of this, it's about having a balance of properties that people can rent and properties that people can buy so they can live and work in the areas where they grew up. And, Madam Chair, the government's stated policy objective for this measure is to disincentivise the acquisition of buy-to-let properties and free up housing stock for main and first-time buyers. But nowhere in the government's impact note, which I referred to, is the private rental sector actually mentioned. My honourable friend for North West Hampshire asked the minister what impact she thought these changes could have and what modelling been done on the rental market, and I'm afraid answer came there none. So hopefully she will have some inspiration by the time she comes to wind up the debate and can give some answers because the impact notice doesn't have any, doesn't hash any information to that point. And so I find that very surprising. That's once again why it's essential that we have a review of these measures to see what the actual real-world impact would have on the rental market, and the new clauses that we have tabled would enable us to do just that. And encouraging home ownership and helping first-time buyers get on the housing ladder is the right thing to do. However, it shouldn't come at the expense of the private rental sector. And as my honourable friend, the Shadow Chancellor, put it in the budget debate, the level of activity in the housing market will be dampened, people will be discouraged from downsizing, which will put pressure on housing supply and labour mobility. And I'm proud that while in government, we helped more people get onto the housing ladder through schemes such as First Homes, Shared Ownership, Right to Buy, the Lifetime ISA and doubled the threshold for stamp duty. However, with only one in eight renters able to afford to purchase a home in the area in which they currently live, renting is the only viable option for many. So all in to the minister's response to those who say increasing stamp duty will reduce the supply of rental housing and rents will increase as a result. I must briefly address the structural tax issues these clauses also create, and I'm grateful to the Chartered Institute for Taxation for the discussions we've had because there's now a top residential rate of nineteen per cent compared to a top rate of five per cent for purchase of a non-residential or mixed property. So taxpayers may be incentivised to argue that the property they're buying is non-residential or mixed use, for example, having a paddock that they use to take advantage of the lower rate. And there's been a number of these cases that have come to the first-tier tribunal and higher courts. So again, I'd be grateful if the minister could address the risk that she sees there, what HMRC have advised her, and whether there'll be increased compliance costs that arise as a result of the divergence.
I mean, the Honourable Gentleman just made a very interesting point about people who may wish to claim they have a paddock at the back of their houses. Does he have any numbers to back that up? Because if he does, I'd be really interested to know that because I'm racking my brains now thinking how many homes in the middle of Stoke-on-Trent Central may wish to claim that they have a paddock that allows a mixed-use tenure. He may have that information in hand, I currently don't.
James Wild.
Well, Stoke-on-Trent, I'm sure is a great place, but not everyone lives there. And as I said, there have been a number of cases that have gone to first-tier tribunals, so he can probably look that information up or ask the House Comms Library. But the point is, none of that information is in the impact assessment that the government's provided for a measure they're bringing forward. The onus is on the government to give the information to Parliament, and they have failed to do so in this case. So, Madam Chair, we share the concerns of experts about the impact these increases will have on the private rental sector and the wider housing market. And the government has set ambitious plans for house building, which we've mentioned, but debates on their proposed changes to the planning system to enable that are for another day. This afternoon, our focus is on whether people looking to rent will find that harder as a result of the measures the government is introducing with reduced supply and higher costs. Our new clauses would ensure the government had to publish an assessment so that we can tell. Thank you.
Rachel Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish to declare that I'm a landlord and I happily paid the three per cent stamp duty that I was required to pay that was introduced by the party opposite when they were in government. For too long, the dream of becoming a homeowner has been unachievable for young people in my constituency of North Warwickshire and Bedford. Properties being snapped up by landlords, and I know that this is even more acutely felt in our coastal towns with so many properties locked up for large parts of the year and used as holiday homes for sometimes only a few weeks. Increasing rates...
Will the other honourable member give way at that point?
Yes.
Jane Cogan.
Thank you. I'm Cornwall, and as the other honourable member was pointing out earlier, this will actually help us. Some of our coastal villages are fifty per cent second homes. We have five per cent of our houses second homes in Cornwall. This can do nothing but good in Cornwall. We don't have the long-term lets that the honourable member was talking about dissuading here. We have short-term lets and we have second homes, so I welcome this measure.
Rachel Taylor.
Thank you. Increasing rates of stamp duty land tax for second properties to five per cent more than those buying their home will free up housing stock for first-time buyers and hopefully stop prices continuing to skyrocket. Before I came to this place, I was a property solicitor at a high street firm in my constituency. Part of the reason that I loved that job was because I got to be part of so many brilliant projects transforming communities. But I was always so happy when I helped first-time buyers who would come through my door, proud that they were able to buy their first home, they'd saved up, and they'd tell me their plans for the future. We would overcome mountains of paperwork. I loved being part of that moment, though, where they got the keys to their first home and they were finally homeowners. I got to know my clients well, and each new homeowner would talk to me about the ways they would become part of their local community, supporting the local football club, working at local businesses, hospitals and schools. They were planning to have kids who'd go to local schools and shops in the town centre. But the longer I worked in that role, the fewer and fewer first-time buyers came into my office. Becoming a homeowner became out of reach for most young people. There are already half a million fewer young homeowners since twenty-ten, and millions are stuck in expensive, poor quality and insecure rented housing. Now, the average cost of a home is over ten times the average income of my constituents. The party opposite left a legacy of the most acute housing emergency in living memory. This government could have ignored it and let more people miss out on becoming homeowners, but they decided to act and boost the supply of affordable homes. In addition, this policy will free up more housing stock for first-time buyers. And for those who can afford the luxury of a second home, it will mean that much-needed income comes into the Treasury in the way of an increased one-off tax by way of stamp duty land tax that will help to pay for the much-needed improvements in health and education which this government promised to deliver. The status quo is unacceptable. Our housing market is not a fair market, and I'm glad that this policy will help to remedy that. It will ensure that those buying properties as investments pay a fair level of tax at the start, and so I would urge all members to vote for this important change.
Daisy Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We Liberal Democrats have long campaigned against what has become in some places the scourge of second homes and which in too many cases can either disrupt or destroy local communities. But I would argue, and my party would argue, that this is not the best way of doing it. Clauses fifty to fifty-three raise stamp duty surcharge on second and subsequent homes. I can see why it's attractive for the government. It's an easy way of raising tax revenue for central government, but it doesn't tackle the root problem. So I would urge the government to look at our Liberal Democrat proposals, which would do both. The impact of holiday homes and short-term lets in particular have been well rehearsed in this House over the years, but without any action by the previous Conservative government to tackle it. In my own constituency of St Albans, we have seen an absolute explosion of Airbnbs. They have become a magnet for antisocial behaviour and for noise, and it takes properties out of the rental market, increasing demand and pushing up rental costs, squeezing many people out of the market and out of our area altogether. The honourable member for North West Norfolk, the Shadow Minister, highlighted the risk that this may pose, this particular measure, from moving properties from long-term let to short-term let. Well, I'm afraid to say, Madam Chair, it may come as some surprise that his government, the previous Conservative government, failed to properly regulate short-term lets. Indeed, when this House considered the levelling up bill, we Liberal Democrats tabled amendments to the levelling up bill to give local authorities the power to regulate the number and location of Airbnbs. That power is desperately, desperately needed because every single corner of our country should be able to strike the right balance for them between tourism and homes for local people where they can build their lives and their community. We also called for a separate planning class to be created for local authorities, and we want local authorities to have the powers to levy higher council tax for newly bought second homes with an additional surcharge on overseas residents. This would provide regular income for our hard-pressed councils, not just infrequent money for central government. Madam Chair, we all know that we have a national housing crisis, but the national housing crisis is a local housing crisis as well because it presents differently in different parts of the country. We urge the government to look at our proposal so we can raise regular tax revenue for our hard-pressed councils whilst tackling this problem at its root. I invite ministers to speak to the Secretary of State for Housing and Communities to make sure that we can give powers to our local authorities to regulate the number and location of short-term lets like Airbnbs so that our communities are no longer disrupted and destroyed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all honourable members for contributing to the debate today, and especially to the member for North Warwickshire and Bedford. It's refreshing to hear someone speak in the chamber who has genuine knowledge of the housing market. I also wanted to just point out gently that the Office of National Statistics Private Rents Index shows that renting in England is now fifty per cent more expensive than fourteen years ago, and that rents in London reached a record high in February of this year when we were not in government.
Will the member give way? Yes, thank you. I'm slightly perplexed as to why the party opposite continues to disagree with this policy, which is an almost replicated policy of one that they introduced a few years ago for exactly the same reason. Why do they continue to do that and fail to understand that landlords did not stop buying properties to rent out or rich people did not stop buying holiday homes just because they had to pay a little bit more in a one-off tax?
Judith Cady.
I thank the Honourable Lady for her intervention, and I have to admit, I have found this debate a little bit baffling in terms of some of the arguments made from the front benches, but I will respond to some of them now. Turning down to amendments, yes.
I'm grateful for allowing her to finish. I think our concern is that there is no assessment of what the impact is going to be on the rental market. The amendment that the opposition's put down is all they are asking for is a review because no evidence has been adduced in this debate. Now, there are three people who've spoken in this debate who've got second properties, who are landlords, and that's completely fine, right? But what we are saying is that there will be an impact on future landlords and an impact on future behaviour from this tax, as there was from the tax that was brought in by the previous government. The second thing to say, forgive me for a slightly extended intervention, is that when you are setting levels of tax, there's a point at which it is optimal for a tax to be levied to the extent that it collects the maximum revenue. Beyond that, it starts to become penal and it has a deterrent effect on activity. And I guess what we're saying is we've got this far and we wish to go no further.
I thank the Honourable Member for his speech, but I will be referencing everything, so he should probably listen carefully because I will be responding to all the points he talks about private rental markets and also the impact that will have. So if I turn to some of the amendments which are tabled by the opposition, who I don't think the member is here, but new clause six would require the government to report on the impact of the changes introduced by clauses fifty and fifty-one of this Act on the cost and supply of private rental properties in different regions of England and Northern Ireland. And new clause seven would require the government to report on the impact of changes introduced by clauses fifty and fifty-one of this Act on the housing market in England and Northern Ireland. Whilst it's important, I understand, to look at the impacts this measures could have on rental costs, supply and the housing market, and in turn tenants, of course, who've been mentioned in this debate, the government does consider these amendments to be unnecessary given that the information is publicly available. The Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government publishes regular updates, as the House will know, on the level of housing supply in England, as well as the England English Landlord Survey, which provides data on supply in the private rented sector. In addition, HM Land Registry publishes extensive data on house prices in England, including regional and local authority area breakdowns. HMRC also publishes, as you will know, Madam Chair, statistics and data on property transaction and SDLT receipts. And on housing supply, the budget set out a series of new investments to kick-start the biggest increase to social and affordable house building in a generation. It's an important step to providing the conditions needed for the market to deliver one point five million homes, homes that are desperately needed by our constituents. The government... The government recognises that the rented sector is often a key part of someone's home ownership journey. The Renters' Rights Bill will improve the current system for both the eleven million private renters and the two-point-three million landlords in England. It will give renters much greater security and stability so that they can stay in their own homes for longer, build lives in their communities and avoid the risk of homelessness. The measures in this bill to increase the highest rate for additional dwellings are intended to support home ownership amongst first-time buyers and those moving home, giving them an advantage in the housing market. The OBR Certified Costing assumes that increasing the higher rate of SDLT by two percentage points is expected to result in a hundred and thirty thousand additional transactions over the next five years by first-time buyers and other people buying a primary residence. In summary, the government has already considered the impact of Clause fifty-one and fifty-two on the private rented sector and housing market and will continue to publish housing market statistics in the usual way and continue to keep all tax policy under review and evaluate the impact of all changes. Therefore, the proposed reports are unnecessary and I urge the House to reject these new clauses. I hope I have been able to reassure Members that raised these new clauses and amendments today, that these additions and changes just aren't necessary for the reasons that I have set out. So I urge the House to reject New Clause Six and Seven and I beg to move that clauses fifty to fifty-three stand part of the bill.
The question is that Clause fifty stand part of the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. With the leave of the House, I shall put together the questions that clauses fifty-one to fifty-three stand part of the bill. The question is that clauses fifty-one to fifty-three stand part of the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. New Clause Six has been selected for separate decision. James Wild, to move New Clause formally. The question is... Sections fifty and fifty-one, impact on private rental sector. The question is that New Clause Six be read a second time. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no.
No.
Division, clear the lobby. Is that New Clause Six be added to the bill? As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no.
No.
Tellers for the ayes are Rebecca Paul and Greg Smith. Tellers for the noes are Gerald Jones and Kate Dearden. New Clause Seven has been selected for a separate decision. James Wild, to move formally.
Review of effects of section fifty and fifty-one on housing market.
The question is that New Clause Seven be read a second time. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no.
No.
Division, clear the lobby. The question is that New Clause Seven be read a second time. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no.
No.
The tellers for the ayes are Rebecca Paul and Greg Smith. The tellers for the noes, Kate Dearden and Gerald Jones.
The ayes to the right, 105. The noes to the left, 314.
The ayes were 105, the noes 314. So the noes have it. The noes have it. Unlock. New Clause 7 has been selected for a separate decision. James Wild to move formally.
Formally.
Review of effects of Sections 50 and 51 on housing market.
The question is that New Clause 7 be read a second time. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no.
No.
Division, clear the lobby.